I can call the meeting to order. Please stand up for allegiance. Ready, begin.
Glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion on meeting norms and adoption of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Actions taken in closed session. The administration requests taking action on the recommendations for expulsions for the following students. Number two-two dash two-three dash four-seven through two-two dash two-three dash five-zero. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Felice. So on a report out from closed session on a motion from trustee Correa and a second to the motion by trustee Arquitas and a photo, a vote of five to zero with trustees Tia Salzberg and trustee Rojas not there. The board approved resolution twenty-three thirty-seven, which is the release and reassignment of certificated administrators. And then we also have another report out from Ms. Aguión.
Thank you. On a motion from trustee Arquitas and a second to the motion by trustee Padilla Salzberg and a vote of six-zero, the board took no action on the government claim Terry against Salinas Union High School District.
I want to correct the report out from closed session. So the motion was from trustee Correa and a second from trustee Arquitas and a five-zero vote with trustees Rubio and trustee Padilla Salzberg not present for that vote. And that was the reassignment of certificated administrators. It's just a correction for the record. So before we get into the, the, um, the meeting, I wanted to start by recognizing our outgoing student trustee, Noelia Colleen, who served our board for a few months, did a great job supporting the, the, not just the board's processes, but also communicating with students through the district to gain additional insights and provide additional insights to the board. So at this time, I'm going to recognize trustee Colleen.
So in appreciation of service and leadership as a student board member of the Board of Trustees, whereas Noelia Colleen was elected as a student board member to the Salinas Union High School District Board of Trustees and served in this capacity during the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas Noelia attended the Santa Cruz County Office of Education Student Board Member Training in the summer of twenty-two. And whereas Noelia demonstrated her personal commitment to the students of the district by being the liaison between students and the Board of Trustees. And whereas Noelia enhanced communication and collaboration between trustees and the student body and taught students the importance of civic involvement. And whereas the Board of Trustees wishes to recognize the valuable service of Noelia that she has rendered as a member of the Board of Trustees through her active participation and contribution to the district. Now therefore be resolved that the trustees, the Board of Trustees of the Salinas Union High School District do hereby express appreciation to this Colleen for her contributions with both students, her community, and this school district. So thank you for your service and congratulations. We've been one of three of you.
I want to say thank you to all of you. It was a pleasure working with every single one of you and seeing how you got into the board. It was kind of amazing, one in a lifetime. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Noelia.
And you get to take home this beautiful picture, huh? And her name, thank you, she forgets who you are. Make sure we take. Maybe the board can, like, who can sit back and have a board behind you.
Sure. Great.
So with the board's permission, we have some students that are here that would like to congratulate her as well. Do you mind if we hear from them now?
Sure, go ahead.
Students that are going to speak, on behalf of Noelia, do you want to come in and speak now?
Am I a little shy?
Good evening, my name is Arlinda Pantoja. I am a member of the migrant student leadership council. I am a junior at Alasa High School. First, I want to thank the board for having us and letting us participate. I also want to thank Noelia Colleen for having us, no, for having the courage to step up and be part of the board to help us, the students have a voice and give us the opportunity to share our ideas. Once again, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. You want their slips?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Shirley Martinez.
Good evening, my name is Shirley Martinez.
Asisto a la escuela Alisal High.
I'm a student at Alisal High School.
Vengo de Nicaragua.
And I come from Nicaragua.
Me siento muy afortunada de estar aquí nuevamente.
I feel very fortunate to be in front of you once again.
Estoy agradecida con Noelia.
I'm very grateful with Noelia Colleen.
Colleen. Por el buen trabajo.
For her good work.
Que hizo por nosotros los estudiantes.
For her good work that she did for us students.
Y también por abogar por las necesidades de nosotros los estudiantes.
And to, and for advocating for our student needs.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My English is bad. I learn English. My name is Caroline Martinez. I'm a member of the migrant student council. I go to Alisal High School. I'm very grateful for the opportunity that the board gives to a student so that they can be on the board of directors, so that students can gain confidence and provide a student voice. Thank you so much.
My name is Melon Gonzalez Fuentes. I'm a junior at San Luis High School. I'm also a member of migrant student council. And I was here last time when Noelia was sworn in and I expressed my gratitude for that. And I'm here yet again to extend my gratitude to the board for allowing student voices to have more power and also to give my gratitude to Noelia for having the courage and responsibility to take on this role and represent students on the board committee. Thank you.
Hello, mi nombre es Sonia Lopez Perea. Tengo dieciséis años, soy originaria de Oaxaca, México.
My name is Sonia Lopez Perea. I am sixteen years old and I am originally from Oaxaca, México.
Vengo de la escuela North Salinas High School.
I am a student at North Salinas High School.
Estoy agradecida por tener otra oportunidad de poder estar aquí.
I am grateful for having an opportunity to be here once again.
Nuevamente para presen, para expresar mi agradecimiento.
To, uh, to express my gratitude.
A la mesa directiva y a Noelia.
And to Noelia.
Por, um, y a Noelia por tener la voz, por los estudiantes.
And for Noelia for having a student voice for us students.
Y a la mesa directiva.
And to the board of directors.
Por poder estar este día para Noelia Colleen.
And for being here today for Noelia Colleen.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dominica Merida. I go to Alisal High School. I am in tenth grade. I am a member of the migrant student council. I am here today to give thanks to Noelia Colleen for taking her time and effort and giving the opportunity to all the students to show their voice.
Do you have more or?
Any more?
Okay, great, thank you.
I think there's another one.
Is there another student in the hall?
No, no, she's for ASB.
No? Okay, good. And so at this time, I'm going to introduce our next student trustee, Daniela Amador from Alvarez High School. Is Daniela here? Very good, congratulations, welcome to the board, you've been sworn in. So you're welcome to join us on the board. Great. Very good. So those are what we have for our student trustee presentation.
Okay, student board presentations, first up, we have La Paz Middle School.
Hello fellow board members, I am Andres Martinez.
And I am Kimberly Lopez and we are the current ASB presidents.
We are excited to present to you our La Paz Middle School board presentation.
We would like to begin our presentation with congratulating our seventh grade girls' basketball team, who were this year's district tournament champions.
Avid students attended a field trip to UC Santa Cruz, El Centro, El Chicano, and Latino Research Center hosted. LPMS students with a, LPMS students with a student panel where college students shared their experiences and LPMS had opportunities to ask questions.
The seventh grade science teachers took their classes on a field trip to San Francisco Botanical Garden. During the trip, students were able to witness a variety of flora and some funa from some selected countries in the world, even from just a brief walk at the San Francisco Botanical Garden, engaged in some hands-on science experiments, and witnessed wildlife in the California Academy of Sciences.
On Friday, the seventeen students were able to attend Schoolyard Wrap, a Black History Month musical. The Schoolyard Wrap is a Black-owned media production established in 2015 and is focused on educating learners of all ages.
Ms. Ellingwood, an eighth grade English teacher, hosted the LPMS spelling bee that took place Thursday, February second. Miley Hernandez earned first place in the event and was able to go on to the countywide spelling bee. Miley was the only student from SUHSD to compete at the countywide competition.
LPMS hosted an in-person SUHSD Salinas Soapbox event based on the Make the Challenge. Various students from La Paz Middle School and Alisal High School participated and spoke passionately about various topics they chose to highlight.
In honor of Valentine's Day, leadership students sold candy grams the week before Valentine's Day and students were able to purchase them for one dollar. They were delivered to their friends the day of Valentine's Day. In addition, leadership students and web students hosted the annual Valentine's Day dance and there was live DJ snacks, drinks, and pizza for students to enjoy.
SPCA visited our leadership class and was able to teach students how to train a dog by showing different tricks that they themselves can take home to show to their pet. They were also given the opportunity to pet and feed the SPCA instructor Jamie's dog.
During Black History Month, daily trivia questions were shared in our morning announcements and students had the opportunity to test their knowledge throughout a cahoot in their homeroom classes. We also had a school-wide field trip sponsored by SUHSD and Schoolyard Wrap that focused on topics including race, culture, and identity.
To celebrate the end of the quarter, the PBI guest team hosted a cup of noodle event after school for student Panther books are earned by students who forward behavior, who follow the behavior and follow the Panther way. Students were able to exchange five Panther books for a cup of noodle.
For the third quarter, Renaissance students were eligible for various awards. Students earning a three-point-oh through three-point-forty-nine GPA were able, were invited to a special student bingo game during sixth period hosted by Ms. Maravillo. Students earning a three-point-five through four-point-oh earned a LPMS school spirit t-shirt.
San Francisco Shakespeare performed a Shakespeare Midsummer Night's Dream at LPMS on March seventeenth. Overall, it was a great performance and students enjoyed the play and their comedic jokes. A few LPMS students were even invited on stage to perform with the crew.
Some of our upcoming events for LPMS are LPMS Panther Party on May fifth. For students in seventh and eighth grade, there will be prizes that students can win playing games. There will also be jump houses for students, foods, snacks, and drinks. We also have an upcoming field trip to Great America on May twelve for our LPMS eighth graders promotion. Dance on May twenty-fourth, where there will be live banda for the eighth graders and promotion on May twenty-fifth for the eighth graders.
Thank you Salinas Union High School District Board members for your time. Be sure to stay updated by checking out our homepage for updates throughout the remainder of the school year.
Next up, Everett Alvarez High School.
Alrighty, um, good evening, board members. I'm Elizabeth Gutierrez, I'm the A C president at Everett Alvarez High School.
Hello, my name is Rosalina Olivo and I am the ASB secretary at Everett's High School.
So first off, we're going to start talking a little bit about our academics.
Our top ten has recently been announced and we're excited to see where their future takes off as they wait for colleges' acceptances. Some have already been accepted to Stanford, Harvard, and UC Berkeley. This year, our valedictorian, Provicio Chombo, has the highest GPA of a four-point-five. Following, we have Rodrigo Alvarez at four-point-four and they were actually tied for, um, for four-point-four as well. So with Angel Manzor.
Um, next up, we have our Everett Alvarez High School students, which are the Rotary students of the month. So for the month, um, academically, it would go October, which was Caitlin Cat Smith. We have for the month of November, Rosio Ibarra. For December, our very own Rosalina Olivo. And for February, Lisbeth Cruz. And each and every single one of these students were, as you can see, given a certificate and put on display for our Rotarians to see how greatly they have been. In their academic achievements as well as in clubs and other services to the community.
Race to submit, we are proud to announce that Everett Alvarez High School has been named number one in the district to have completed our basketball applications for the school year of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Having three-hundred-and-sixty-one seniors complete the application.
Something else we had, which was really cool, is our entire tenth grade class took a field trip on March fifteenth to San Francisco, California, where they saw the play Six, the musical. Um, and it was really cool for them to have that very visual experience of what it was, but also learning and gaining that knowledge.
Our accounting departments are now working with the middle school students, who will be incoming freshmen at Everett Alvarez High School, to present the diversity of programs we offer.
And we'd like to give a huge congratulations to our very own Ms. Chloe Zarza for being awarded the Teacher of the Year for the entire Salinas Union High School District. We are very, very, very proud of Ms. Zarza and the impact that she's had at our school, just bringing it uplift, uplifting all of our students. So, um, thank you, Ms. Zarza, if you are watching out there for your incredible hard work and dedication.
Okay, now, we would like to acknowledge what happened at Alvarez High School during the floods. We were heavily impacted by the rain and heavily impacted. Water from the nearby creek overflowed and flooded softball, tennis, baseball, and finally, the football stadium, where track athletes were left without a track. But we would like to announce that today, we finally got our stadium back and everything's back to normal, so.
Um, so other academic stuff that we have coming up is students are working, of course, A P testing is approaching very closely and teachers are having after-school preps as well as attendance recovery classes and after, um, those prereg, that our councils are working on for our sophomores and juniors. Um, we also have our S-BAC testing, S-BAC testing, excuse me, which actually begins tomorrow. So we're getting prepared to that and hoping all of our students in junior class get a good night's rest for tomorrow.
And now we would like to move forward with our activities. So our ASB at Everett Alvarez High School attended the California Association Director of Activities Conference, where they took tips from other leadership students to implement new school activities that we would like to have at Everett Alvarez High School.
Um, in the month of December, we had our two community events, which the first one is our annual canned food drive. So we had eight barrels around all throughout campus. And they were to be filled with non-perishable food items. There was a homeroom competition, so the homeroom that collected the most cans, um, were awarded a pizza party. So that was really cool. We also had our adoptive family, which is clubs around campus to come together and they quote-unquote adopt a family that is a student of E A H S. Everything is completely anonymous, we do not know who the student is. All we know is that this student unfortunately wasn't going to get the Christmas that we all dream of. So our clubs pitched in to help out and give them that. So that was really cool to see all those clubs come in together and, um, big shout out to our N G R O T C, which actually donated over two thousand dollars in gift cards for our families.
This school year, our winter ball theme was a Bronx Tale, taking place at the Monterey Beach Station, where we had, we had a DJ, we had bonfire, and we had an amazing games. It was a really nice night.
Um, Link Crew freshman unity days. So our Link Crew club on campus hosted the freshman unity days from January twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. Um, this was a big day full of fun and just kind of making sure that our freshmen know that at Everett Alvarez, we are a unit and we're here for each other and just kind of break them in more as they go on into their sophomore year and getting more comfortable on the campus and with their fellow classmates.
Black History Month, Everett Alvarez High School celebrated Black History Month by having, um, having themed weeks such as, such as having a spirit week where we dressed as artists and athletes. Following, we had writers and poets, where we would decorate like a door competition contest following like writers and poets. And then week three, we had, um, we had a movie night and a market night in which we were, we were the first, um, yeah, okay. We were the first, we would like to announce that we were the first night market where we had, um, where we, where we honored the black-owned businesses and we actually had KSBW out there, so that was something.
That was really cool and we want to give a big shout out to our vice president, Kalina Eastley, who really took charge on this and put her whole entire heart and soul into this. She reached out to vendors, she organized, and she made everything was to perfection. So that was really, really cool to see the turnout on that night. Our multicultural day, so every year, we have a multicultural day on campus where our clubs come in to fund raises during a extended lunch. They sell food items such as nachos, Filipino Club sauce ponset, and lupea. Um, just a bunch of snacks, really cool to raise awareness about the different clubs on campus for some that may not know what clubs we do offer. And also kind of give an opportunity for our clubs, like the Filipino Club, who gave a performance and also thank you to Alisal Baila Focorico, who came in and gave a performance as well.
And I would like to move on to our athletics. We would like to honor these athletes for their amazing work, hard work, and dedication during the winter season. I would like to recognize our winter sports for all of them qualifying for CCS for the first time in history altogether. Introducing the, all the individual championships. And then we also have our first team All Leagues and we also have our second team All League Eagles. So huge shout out for all their hard work that they put into the season.
Yeah, as you can see, our all teams are very long list, so our Eagles are very hard at their crafts, but also keeping those grades up.
And our upcoming events, we have base. We have baseball, softball, volleyball, golf, track and field, and swimming. So we are, we are proud to announce that our returning CCS championships for the softball ladies. So we're waiting to see how they do this season, so.
And our track is placing high as well as our boys' golf team, who need one more game to be league champions. So we are very proud to announce that our spring sports are doing very well as well. So our upcoming events, um, tomorrow morning, we have our annual Steinback Rotary Breakfast, which takes place at our school, um, just to thank them for everything that they've done throughout our school year to make it so much better and really showcase our academics. We also have our prom this Saturday, which we seniors are very excited about. Um, our theme this year is a golden moment, so really, this is our moment. This is our moment to finally soak it in right before, you know, we take those finals and we're off to our future endeavors. We also have our annual's Eagle Got Talent competition. Um, it's just a talent show, show off your talent, show us what you got. And, you know, you'd be surprised every year what students can actually do. We have amazing singers, people who play instruments, poets, everything. Um, as well as mentioned before, we have S-BAC testing starting tomorrow morning for our junior class with field trips and movies and graduation information for all of our other grades. And I believe that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Washington Middle School.
Good evening, my name is Izumi Lopez.
And mine's Ella Button.
And as you know, we are the co-presidents at Washington Middle School. Tonight, we are thrilled to be here once again to showcase to you all of the wonderful things that have been happening in this last semester at our school. WMS academics, our Saturday remediation is, has been completed with seventy-two percent of our students being back on track for a promotion. Collaborative leads participated in a release day on March twenty-first to plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Their discussions were centered around Fulham's Research Book Coherence. On Thursday, April sixth, twenty-twenty-three, we facilitated a round of learning walks. The focus of the learning walk visit was expectations and routines. Reviewing again, our Bronco check-in, we currently have had nineteen thousand responses since August. All students complete the check-in every Monday morning. This has been a great way for our Bronco Wellness Team to connect with and help students who might need someone to talk to. Our five-star point program continues to grow in popularity. Teachers can award students for being safe, respectful, or responsible. The picture shows the line of students waiting to pick out prizes from the swag and wagon. The stress ball, keyboard cover, and mice seem to be very popular items at the moment. We are very fortunate to have gear up on our campuses here as they provide a lot of additional support to our eighth grade students. We recently celebrated College Awareness Month and had presentations about colleges during our intervention period. We recently celebrated College Awareness Month and had presentations about colleges during our intervention period. We also had a college spirit week with college-themed dress-up days such as Crushin' College Apps, which was superhero day, and Making Your Dreams Come True, which was Disney Dress-Up Day. And a few others you can see here on the slide. We also had a college do- door design contest. Gira posted a career fair during lunch one day in which places like the Fire Department, S P C A, Digital Nest, and Second Harvest Food Bank, and many more, were talking to students about their careers, and it was very well attended. Additionally, Gira has been hosting a mini-series after school in which students can learn about study skills, money management, goal-setting, and tips for self-care. Students who attend a certain number of Gira events get their end-of-the-year trip to Great America paid for. Our P B I S team and A S V teamed up for another great event, which was W M S Family Night. We invited families of current and soon-to-be Broncos to join in on the fun. We had food, face painting, a gaming truck, chess challenges, oversized Jenga, and Connect Four, as well as a few large games of musical chairs, balloon stomp, and the ever-popular four-way tug-of-war. We had over two hundred people attend and fun was had by all. Additionally, P B I S is hosting a field trip to the Exploratorium for one hundred students who were randomly selected from all students who have not been tardy this semester. Recently, our school was invited to attend not one, but two performances by Schoolyard Rap. The first one was in Monterey and about fifty of our students and staff attended. It focused on Black History and coincided with Black History Month. They told stories through dances and slides. The second performance of Schoolyard Rap was in Salinas and all of our students and staff were able to attend. This performance was a bit different in that it was as if the speaker was having a direct conversation with us. It was very powerful and some of the student responses after the presentation can be seen on the slide. One student says, "I learned that our Hispanic heritage is beautiful," and another says, "I was reminded that no matter what, you should respect one another." We felt fortunate to have been invited to this presentation, and it was certainly a good reminder to be inclusive as well as be proud of who you are and where you come from.
This semester has been very busy at W M S. One of the events that Leadership hosted recently was International Women's Day as part of our celebration of Women's History Month. Our Leadership and Web Classes did a projects on history, historical women leaders, and preparations for this day. And the sixty projects were displayed, displayed around the gym. We had a scavenger hunt in which students who participated went around the gym and found answers to questions about the women. If they turned them in, they were given motivational stickers and entered into a drawing for prizes. We also had a picture station with posi- positive words, face painting, and a Women's Day puzzle students could work on. It was completed by the end of lunch. It happened to rain that day, so we had an extra-large turnout. In March, W M S had an, our annual open house to showcase the amazing work students have been doing at our school. Leadership brought back a pre-COVID tradition of having a pasta dinner before open house. This dinner not only serves as a great opportunity to have families come together to eat before this event, but it also is a hands-on collaborative learning project for Leadership students as they learned about budgeting, placing orders, ta- ticket sales, table design, and serving. Evergroup's table had a different theme, and we not only served our guests, but we also had to dress up in theme as well. Represented on the slide are cinema, Hawaiian, and Mardi Gras tables. Our school also got into the Irish spirit and celebrated Saint Patrick's Day. Students could wear green and we had school-wide hunt for the lucky green coins that Lever Conns had left behind. Coins were turned into street treats and gold coins were turned into Saint Patrick's Day-themed prizes. Our staff was treated to green pancakes made by our Principal, Ms. Lopez. Pie Day, otherwise known as March fourteenth, happened to be one of the s- the school days that was canceled due to the potential flooding, but we still celebrated when we got back. We played math games and the winners, with the winners got slices of pie, of course. Back in February, Leadership hosted the X O X O Broncos After-School Party. We had games, food, a DJ, and a very popular photo booth. As you can see here, some of our staff got involved with the fun. The Washington D C Club recently took their trip to D C and Philadelphia. We saw lots of different memorials and was able to see the spring cherry blossoms in bloom. The pictures re- represented here show, show us in front of the Capitol Building, the White House, and the Rocky Stairs, which is in front of the Philadelphia Museum of Art, Mount Vernon, and the Liberty Bell. The cherry blossom picture has the Jefferson Memorial in the background. It was a very educational and fun experience. Mr. Johnson and the P B I S team keeps athletically inclined students very busy at our school with our lunchtime intramural games. Most recently, you can see in the pictures on the slide, there is a World Cup Soccer Tournament, a Dodge Bowl Tournament, and a March Madness Tournament. In addition to sports tournaments, we also have gaming tournaments. We are having a Mario Kart Eight Pro Tournament and a Smat- Smash Bros. Tournament as well. Our after-school sports are going strong. We currently have track and field, girls soccer, boys volleyball, and wrestling. In fact, if you are interested, our school is hosting the David Raptis Wrestling Tournament this Saturday in our gym from nine to about two P M. Seven of our schools and Buena Vista will be competing. David Raptis is a retired P E teacher from our school and was a very important part of the wrestling programs throughout our district. He will be driving from Sacramento to be in attendance. Thank you for all of your support in making our school and district a place where all students can be successful.
Thank you. Next up, Alisal High School.
Hello, Board. Uh, before we start, I'm gonna pass these around real quick.
We like swag.
Thank you. Look at. Thank you.
And then we're also gonna give you all this, uh, book. This was the C A D E Long Beach Photo Book. Um, that was presented, that's being presented by, uh, Ms. Rachel Torres, our awesome community liaison. More information, we'll bring that up right now. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Rocco Contreras and the Alisal High School A S B President.
And I am Adama Riz Harquinda, Alisal A S B Vice President.
And today, we are back again to present to you all our spring report out.
We will be going over the three A's of Alisal, which are academics, ac- academics, activities, and athletics.
Firstly, we will be going over our academics. In this category, we have new P B I S reports, college and career readiness, college field trips, our migrant debate team, and the C A D E Conference, and the Seal of Biliteracy.
To begin with P B I S, we are glad to announce that we have redeemed one thousand eight hundred eighty-four Trojan trade tickets. These tickets are rewarded to students who have shown actions of being respectful, responsible, and safe at school. They can later trade these tickets for prizes such as the Trojan gear that we passed out. In the month of March, P B I S lessons also kicked off. These lessons included behavioral and academic expectations, along with L P A C and preparations for those who were taking it. Our Wellness Center also fits in our academics category. In the month of February, a hundred and eighty-one students have used the center and a hundred and forty-seven have de-escalated with the support provided. At Alisal, we want our students to a- achieve academically, but we kill, we care for our students' well-being before anything.
Of course. And moving on to our college and career readiness, we have received our C S U and U C statistics for the class of twenty-twenty-two. For the U Cs, we had a hundred and eighty-one applicants, a hundred and thirty-eight were admitted, and sixty-three enrolled. This is quadrupled the amount of students who enrolled in twenty-sixteen. Alisal still holds the highest number of U C applicants, admitted and enrolled throughout the district. A total of eighty-nine students have enro- have enrolled to C S U campuses. Compared to the year before, enrollment at C S U campuses from Alisal students has increased. These are schools such as C S U M B, Sacramento State, San Jose State, and Fresno State. This brings us to a total of a hundred and fifty-two graduates who are now pushing or pursuing a higher education at a U C or C S U campus. As for this year, we've had a student of ours match to the Quest Bridge Program. Quest Bridge is a scholarship program that aims to support low-income students of all backgrounds in the U S. One of our very own, Marco Nunez, matched with Stanford University and will be attending this year in the fall.
As we know, by the end of this month, seniors will be making the decisions that take them to the next step after high school. In order to help students be clear on the options that they have for their higher education, our school, along with our avid advisor, Ms. Huerta, have not only taken committed seniors, but all avid grades onto campuses. A total of sixteen campuses have been visited by Alisal students. This includes C S U M B, San Francisco State, U C Santa Cruz, Cal Poly Slope, C S U Fresno, and many more. In this past weekend, we actually had a group of about twenty-seven students who were admitted into U C Davis and had the opportunity to go to an overnight, all-expense-paid trip to attend Aggie Day with parents. This upcoming Thursday and Friday, we also have another planned trip to U C San Diego.
Our most recent event making Alisal history is the win for our migrant program that took place in March at the District-Wide Speech and Debate Tournament. The team placed first at Salinas High School, and schools from all over the Monterey County, Watsonville, and Pajaro Valley all competed in this tournament. We are immensely proud of our Trojans and our special, and our Spanish debate team. Buen trabajo, troianos.
For the past thirty years, thanks to Ms. Rachel Torres, our community liaison, eighteen parents were able to participate in the California Association for Bilingual Education, also known as the CABE Conference in Long Beach. Parents were able to take several workshops to learn more about education policy, parent involvement in school, and strategies on supporting their child's success in their education.
To end our academics category, another accomplishment, Alisal has a large number of students who are qualified and may soon be qualified for the Seal of Biliteracy. A hundred and fourteen seniors are officially guaranteed for the seal, and two hundred and twenty-five are currently pending from their stamp language test. With the numbers combined in the year of twenty-twenty-three, we have three hundred and thirty-nine students that could graduate with the Seal of Biliteracy stamp on their diploma. This is about half of our class size, and this has not been seen before. And now for our second A, activities. To begin, we began our semester with the Spirit Week, leading up to Winter Ball that took place at the Fox Theater. Our Spirit Week consisted of each class decorating a cart to the theme of Netflix originals. Not only did students participate in this fun activity, but they were also able to gain community service hours. The day Winter Ball was also fun and a success.
Two activities, which for us were major accomplishments, were drives that were set by the Giving Back Committee at Alisal. From November twenty-ninth up to December ninth, two hundred and eight toys were collected from both teachers and students on campuses and were gifted to our neighboring elementary, Alisal Elementary. Because of the weather conditions in California that had, that happened in the beginning of the year, the committee also planned an essential drive. This ascen- these donations ranged from the clothes, from clothes, toiletries, blankets, and canned food. All these donations will be donated and delivered to Dorothy's Kitchen.
On March eighth, Alisal hosted an event in order to honor International Women's Day. Alisal invited special female speakers onto campus who were able to speak and celebrate the successes of women who have impacted their lives. The purpose of the event is used to uphold the women's achievements, recognize their challenges, and celebrate their successes. It was a wonderful event planned by our amazing community liaison, Ms. Torres.
A current activity which we brought back to Alisal is the Unified Basketball League. This is the unification between students with special needs, basketball athletes, and students in the leadership class, not only from Alisal, but from all schools in the district. This is an opportunity for students to interact with one another and feel included with the use of sports. Alisal has had small victories over Alvers and Salinas High. And with this, we hope that this is the beginning of many inclusive activities that will happen soon.
Project Soapbox is a public speaking program that calls students to speak on issues that affect them and their community. This year, two hundred Alisal students submitted their issues. Of those two hundred students, seven students were selected to participate in the District-Wide Showcase. Three of those who were invited to the civic engagement showcase, including Melissa Savala, our very own, will be presenting at the National Showcase in Washington, D C. This is Alisal High's second year in a row to making it to the National Showcase. Awesome.
And now for our final A, athletics. In our winter season, we had three hundred and twelve students participate in soccer, basketball, and wrestling. Forty-eight of those students were able to maintain a GPA of four-point-oh or higher, ninety-five with a GPA of three-point-five or higher, and a hundred and sixty-nine with a GPA of three-point-zero or above. We have multiple students every year sign to schools that offer them athletic opportunities. And so far, we had one of our wrestlers, Diego Chides, get recruited for the N C A A Division Two Wrestling and Mental College in Atherton.
As for the Central Coast Section Playoffs, we are proud to announce that all of our winter teams made it to C C S. Girls soccer and boys basketball made it to the first round of playoffs. Girls basketball reached the quarterfinals, and our boys soccer was able to lead it all the way up to the finals. In wrestling, we had champions, two of our lady Trojans, Isabel Garcia and Yoselin Hernandez. Also with wrestling, we had five Trojans that were C C S state-bound, including Diego Chides, Alondra Juarez, Celeste Mesa, and Isabella Garcia and Yoselin Hernandez.
And that now concludes our Alisal High School Spring Report.
But before we go, we wanted to share a statement, which is, at Alisal, we continue to thrive on the unification and successes that all of our students bring to the table. We continue to come together and drive the love and culture that's shown in all parts of A H S. Thank you all, and go Trojans!
Next up, we have individuals desiring to address the board.
Thank you, Vice President Felice. Trustees, we have a lot of slips tonight. So we are gonna start with, um, our students. Speak, uh, th- those that are students first, we have a group of students. And I will remind all of our speakers, you're allowed three minutes to address the board. The board may limit total time for public input on a single item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. Also, keep in mind, at this time, uh, the board does not respond or interact with public comments. So we're gonna start, uh, with Brenda Cardona, Clarissa Medrano, Brianna Serna, and Nicole, is it Lebion? I hope so, from Salinas High School.
Good evening, Board President Rubio and members of the board. Our names are Nicole Covian, Clarissa Medrano, Brianna Serna, and Brenda Cardona. And we are the next graduating class from Salinas High. We are here this evening to adde- address the district's decision on not allowing students to decorate graduation caps for our ceremony we have been anxiously awaiting for since our freshman year. Since the pandemic, students have not been able to express themselves and show their hidden talents such as making music, writing poetry, and creating art. By granting seniors the choice to decorate their caps, you are providing seniors the freedom to express themselves before entering adulthood. We have developed a plan with guidelines to keep the caps creative, celebratory, and safe while following S U H S D policies and guidelines. We will require students to have their caps pre-approved by the appropriate parties a week prior to graduation. Caps will be kept in large bins in A S B organized alphabetically by surname and under the supervision of the assisting staff until the day of graduation. A S B juniors and volunteer staff will be prepared to hand students their pre-approved caps in an orderly fashion before the commencement of the ceremony. We have a planned device, and we would like to leave copies for your approval.
Thank you.
Throughout these years, we have been told to be proud of ourselves and proud of our differences. So please allow us the ability to express our past, present, and future. It is something we're excited to share as students. For some, it's heritage; for some, their college decisions; and for others, hidden talents such as art. We are proud of these things that make us special. All we ask is for you to be proud of our accomplishments and embrace our diversity with us. Please allow us to decorate our caps. Thank you.
So these next items are items indicated they are on the agenda tonight. So first I have Steve McDougall.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I'm Steve McDougall. I wear many hats, but tonight I'm wearing the hat of the Lead Labor Delegate to the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council. And I'm here in solidarity with my siblings with CSEA, the Steinbeck Chapter. I'd like them to stand up, please. All of them, please. There are many, many job classifications I could address tonight in the bargaining unit of CSEA, but I'm only going to pick the one that the students, many if not most of them, see first and last each day. And I don't know why it's taken years to get the reclass done, but it has. And I don't know why, when they get a decent raise recently, it's eroded by reducing hours, by consolidating bus routes, and making them pull their hair out, driving through alleys and who knows what type of situations. So the raise is gone. That was kind of genius on behalf of management to do that. Real genius. Well, I'll tell you what's really genius. I don't forget things. I remember what happened to that district just to the north of us, in Pajaro Valley, not too long ago. When the bus drivers weren't treated well, they didn't show up one day all of a sudden. And what happened over there? They got management's attention. Am I suggesting they do that? No, but know this. We don't get paid if the students don't come between P one and P two, and I'm not sure we hit P two yet. Maybe we're close. But I do know this. We don't get paid, we're in trouble. That's that. Think of bus drivers as our revenue stream conduits. They bring them to us so we can get paid. You don't take care of them, they go away. And then what are you going to do? We don't get paid. So take care of all of them. Enough already. CSEA, we got your back.
Next, we have Megan Anderson.
Members of the board, my name is Megan Anderson, and I have been working as a social science teacher at Hardin Middle School for ten years. We at Hardin Middle School demand safe schools for all adults and students, especially for our black students. Based on my experience this year, I have heard the N-word more times in a single year than I've had in my nine years combined. I have students make jokes about monkeys and apes. I have seen people changing their Google avatar to be exaggerated features of black people. This is not one incident, this is constantly every single day, and it is hurting our black students' emotional health, and we need to do something. Although I appreciate the opportunity to take students to Schoolyard Wrap, it was met with another racist incident of a student who had the audacity and the school climate to think that it was okay to change his phone number to the N-word and a monkey emoji and parrot so that everyone can see it in the auditorium. But even if this day went without, went without a hitch, it was still a lukewarm response to real societal problems, and for a moment, we as a district forgot how to be educators. There was no information given about this presentation. There was no lead-up activities to it, and there was no reflection to talk about it afterwards. Members of our own teachers came up with things on their own, but we didn't get anything from you. And if this was something that you wanted to do to show the equity that we provide our students, no matter what their race, creed, and orientation is, we need to be unified in our message of what that presentation was for, what the why was, and what the purpose is, and then what they should take from it. It should not be on individual teachers to come up with that conversation on our own. It makes me feel like we are doing things to tick boxes. We are doing things for Instagram posts. We are doing things to get attention, but we are not willing to do the hard work. We need resources. We need people to listen to the Jedis and provide us the help that we need so that every student feels safe. Because that's where we're at. This is what we need. We need help. Listen to the Salinas Black Caucus who are here most weeks. They have great ideas. Provide bias training for all students, not just introduction terms, but real bias training so that we can help our students and our communities and the parents look at their own bias too. So we are in a world where every student belongs, not just tries to fit in. We need our students safe, no matter who they are, and we need your help. We can't do it on our own. Thank you.
So next I have Erica Lynn Krieger.
Members of the board, my name is Erica Lynn Krieger. My pronouns are they/them. And I've been working at Hardin as a Math eight teacher for three years. I'm speaking here today to convince you to fully fund and support efforts to end rampant anti-queer and anti-trans bias in SUHSD to better support student and staff safety. As an out and proud queer, non-binary teacher, I have been honored to serve as a confidante and mentor to many queer, trans, questioning, and allied students as they try and navigate a world and community that does not always make clear that they are welcome and important. And I have also spent hours talking both virtually and in person frantically with suicidal queer and trans teens, trying to work with admin and counselors to give them the help they need. Fortunately, none have died or hurt themselves, but it is disgusting and sickening that we had to get to this point, that their cries for help were not noticed earlier. That they had to suffer because we do not have the systems in place to meet their emotional needs and actively make them feel like they are a part of our community. The anti-queer and anti-trans bias they experience at school doesn't just hurt them mentally. Thirteen percent fewer queer SUHSD seventh graders are academically motivated compared to their straight peers, according to the latest data from the California School Climate Health and Learning Survey. Queer seventh graders in HUS, SUHSD are seventy-five percent more likely to be chronically absent than their straight peers. And most galling and sad, while ten percent of straight seventh graders in SUHSD have contemplated suicide, fifty percent, fifty percent of queer seventh graders have. Until queer, trans, and questioning students feel welcome and accepted on their own terms, they will not be safe on campus. We at Hardin Middle School demand safe schools for all adults and students, including those who are part of the queer and trans communities. Train all staff, admin, and teachers on how to recognize and combat anti-queer and trans bias. Provide funds for anti-queer phobia events and programs, similar to the recent Schoolyard Wrap programming. And to echo what the previous speaker, Megan, said, make sure that it is a unified message, so it doesn't just come across like you're ticking a box, but like you actually care. Please, do something before one of my students ends up succeeding in trying to end their life.
Next, I have Adrienne Uribe. Adrienne Uribe?
Good evening. My name is Adrienne Uribe, and I teach social studies at Hardin Middle School. We at Hardin Middle School demand safe schools for all adults and students. I'm here to ask that the Steering Committee for Social Science be allowed to purchase an updated print version of textbooks that have changed a few simple words surrounding the institution of slavery. One of the greatest pleasures I've had in my classroom is teaching many different cultures and ethnicities that have contributed to the history of the United States. Our curriculum, TCI, does a really good job of highlighting multi-ethnic backgrounds of immigrants. Right now, I am teaching about the history of black Americans, including slavery, emancipation, reconstruction, and the thousands of remarkable African-Americans who have contributed to make America what it is today. With the movement towards social justice and equity during two thousand and twenty, many people, books, and institutions have taken a long look at the language that has the subtle overtones of racism. One of the biggest shifts that I have seen is the shift from using the word slave to enslaved and master or owner to enslaver. While this distinction may seem miniscule, the ripple effect is making a big difference in shifting the narrative from a mass-produced, static label of subjugation given to millions of humans to an elevated level of individual personhood. Slavery is an institution that involuntarily imposed deplorable intergenerational conditions upon people based on their race. The utter definition of racism. Right now, in each social studies classroom sits a set of TCI's History Alive that was published in two thousand and seventeen. While I cannot speak for the, to the frequency of how chattel slavery may be referenced in other grade levels, since it is central to eighth-grade content standards, I do know that the textbook in the classroom uses slave and master. While the online version, changed last year, use enslaved and enslaver. I'm here to ask that the steering team be allowed to look into replacing the textbooks in the classroom to an updated version. While we do have access to the online version, as we've experienced many times this year, technology frequently fails us. Why does this matter? Safety. Our black students and staff are a true minority in our district. Yet the issues surrounding race and racism is central to the heart of this district. The issues surrounding race have made headlines far too long. And we have to address this through educating our students with appropriate language that elevate the dignity to see them as the person they were, not just the label steeped in bondage. Changing the language is a brave but necessary thing that must be done.
So, board, the next set of slips, I believe there's fourteen, are all regarding classification. So you have a twenty-minute process in your, for public input, but I do think, from what I was told, some speakers may want to come up together. So if you'd like to come up with somebody else, if you have a similar thought, that would be supported by the board as well. So we will start with... We will start with Margaret Murray Wells. And if you fill out a slip and you're coming up together, let me know so I can pull the slips together. Okay.
So I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before. So my name is Margaret Murray Wells, and I am here to speak on behalf of all classified employees regarding the reclassification that began in July two thousand and sixteen. Many of us have been waiting patiently and looking forward to this process being completed. This process was to be conducted on a single seven-year period as of today. Only year one and year two have been completed. Year three began, but unfortunately was not completed. This was the start of the delay, then with COVID, the process was halted. In December two thousand and twenty-one, we were excited to hear that a new company was hired and the process would get back on track. We were asked to provide information to assist in the reclassification process. As quickly as this new process began, it ended. It is very frustrating and disheartening. I provided the information requested and found that my job description was written back in March two thousand and one. That is twenty-two years ago. A lot has happened in twenty-two years. A lot has changed in twenty-two years. I also found that my position encompasses duties from four positions, including mine. My, my position is Accounting Tech One, as is Carla's, where I range twenty-six. We also do functions that are in the Accounting Tech Two, Range Twenty-Eight position. We're Purchasing Technician, Range Twenty-Nine, and also Accounting Technician Three, Range Thirty-One. So our position, which is a Range Twenty-Six, includes duties that are in a Range Twenty-Eight, Twenty-Nine, and Thirty-One. This information makes it clear that the job descriptions are outdated and inaccurate. This could be one of the reasons why the district has over a hundred open classified positions. The seven-year process ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. If the reclassification has not been completed by this date, will changes and increases be applicable? If, if changes and increases are applicable, will it be retroceded back to the year that the position should have been completed? A tentative agreement was signed by the district and the CSEA members. Board, are you going to ensure that the commitment made by the district is honored to all classified and ensure that the reclassification is done once and for all?
Just can I get, have Carla's names, everybody else's names?
Oh, yes.
Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I believe this is Martin Seitz. Sunshine Seitz. Signatures sometimes are difficult for us.
A lot of S's. Thank you, board members. My name is Sunshine Martin Seitz, and I work at Hardin Middle School. I'm here to speak about classified reclassification across the board for employees. We are classified, did our part, and our input regarding our reclassification, which was started before COVID and then started again after COVID, and we deserve our classification and pay. I ask that you consider our hard work and pay as what we deserve. In addition, higher pay motivate people to apply and stay and fill the fifty-eight para educator vacancies that the district currently has. Thank you for your time. I've been working for this district for twenty-three years. I've been a para one all that time. It took me eighteen years to go full-time. I have been dedicated to this district and my job. And I have to say, we really deserve this. There are only two of us at Hardin that are push-in para educators. Doing, and we have not enough kids that we can help. I didn't realize how bad it was until I went into a push-in position a month ago. And I'll tell you, it's really sad how many kids are failing out there. And the other thing to think about is maybe rewriting our job description and going back to maybe finding those moms that need that, that extra income and they need that time off and not looking at people who have a two-year college education. Thank you.
Next up, I have Jessie Tamayo. Jessie Tamayo.
I have my laptop because I have worked a lot. Good evening, board, cabinet members, and Superintendent Burns. Today, I'm representing the Salinas Union High School District Registars and Registress Clerk. I would like to address the reclassification. Since the approximate year of two thousand and sixteen, we have been patiently waiting for reclassification to be fully processed. For reasons unbeknown to us, this matter keeps getting pushed to the side. During this time, we have lost registrars and registrar clerks who have to look for other positions. As registrars, we have met multiple times to do our part in assessing our job descriptions, titles, steps, workload, et cetera. In detail, we have outlined everything that falls under our duties, tasks, and responsibilities. We have done the work so that our job descriptions reflect the work that we do on a day-to-day basis and not so generalized. The registrar department is so much more than enrolling students. The detailed work that our department, as registrars and registrar clerk, handles on a daily basis is not one that can be done by just anyone. And we deserve these, we deserve these positions to be reclassified to the capacity And we deserve these positions to be reclassified to the capacity in which we really work and what it truly entails. This will also help retain qualified staff that will boost morale and attract future employees to our district. We should have competitive salaries in the valley and peninsula. We need a consultant that is familiar with our district and can work with our job descriptions and the possibility of a higher range and pay increase. There have been two companies hired by the district that have been unable to fulfill this task, possibly because it has not been taken seriously. At this point, our district has sent a clear message to classified staff that we are not an important factor nor valued for our hard work. Registrars, like many other classified positions, have continued to work through COVID storms and many other crises, not just from home but on campus. Our tasks have multiplied these past years. Therefore, we ask for the respect we deserve and that this reclassification be taken seriously and finalized. Now that I have spoken for my peers, I would like to just mention about my site, Rancho San Juan High School. The registrar's clerk is 10 months. I understand that there's a formula used based on enrollment to make the position 12 months, which we are not quite there yet. But let me tell you, that does not help with the workload. I came in new a year ago during the busiest time of the year, getting ready for graduation and summer school and registration for the new school year. Man, was I busy. But the work got done. But this reclass will sure help me get a 12-month registrar's clerk for the future. Please help your dedicated classified employees with following through with the reclassification to make this district everyone wants to be at. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jen Gilzdorf.
Members of the board, Mr. Burns and district admin, my name is Jen Gilzdorf and this is my third year teaching at Harden Middle School. I'm speaking to you tonight to convince you to help us take action against what I feel is the most dangerous weapon on our campus, cell phones. It is good for parents to be able to check in with their students often, but there's a very dark side to this availability of technology and communication for our students as well. We at Harden Middle School demand safe schools for all students and adults. Please consider the following two traumatic examples. The first was our swatting incident that happened earlier this year. A group of boys made a dramatic and fake 911 call from a cellphone at school that changed the life of one of my students and myself forever. I was shocked when about eight police officers walked by my classroom window and into my room, then made everyone leave their belongings and go outside. And I was heartbroken that my student, who was swatted, would be intercepted by more officers with handcuffs on his way to the office where I was sending him and didn't know. I can't believe I'm actually going to say this out loud, but my student was lucky. He was lucky he didn't try to run or resist out of pure fear. He is lucky to be alive right now. Please help us by purchasing cellphone lockers or yonder pouches for the safety of our school. Please help us before students using cellphones inappropriately cause a serious injury or death. The other example happened at our schoolyard rap event, when a student had the gall to not only try to pair their cellphone to the Bluetooth of the presenter's screen, but had an offensive racial slur and image as their phone's identity for the entire school to see on the massive screen. This, excuse me, more disturbingly, many students in the audience supported this poor behavior. This abhorrent use of a child's cellphone led to pain and anger for the presenters and nothing less than complete embarrassment on the part of HMS staff. Please contact parents and help them see how much damage these phones can and do cause. Please teach our parents that responsible citizenship needs to be taught at home first with firm boundaries and consequences. On a more daily occurrence, lunchtime at our campus feels like I'm on an episode of TMZ. I'm surrounded by 1,200 young reporters whose eyes light up at the sound of any little disturbance in the environment, whose heads actively search for its origin, and whose feet run towards it while their hands deftly get the camera open on their cellphone and raise it up to catch a punch being thrown, hair being pulled, or two bodies wrestling on the ground, all so that they can airdrop it to all the surrounding phones and post it on social media. The issue with cellphones is important because we all have a right to feel safe. Students carrying a cellphone at school is a privilege, not a right, and it needs to be revoked immediately. Our students have demonstrated to us that they lack the ethics and morals in digital citizenship, no matter how many lessons we offer on the subject. Clearly, our 12- to 14-year-old students are not mature enough to know right from wrong when it comes to the use of their cellphones. Their privilege of carrying a cellphone simply cannot compromise our rights to be safe. Thank you.
Eduardo Garcia, Classified Employee of the Year. For the county.
Thank you, everyone. It's not about me, it's about us, CSEA. Good evening, board members. Thank you for hearing me out. I'm just here to let everybody know that reclassification, I know you keep hearing it over and over, but you're going to hear it again. You know, it takes time for us, as I'm a campus supervisor, a security guard, it takes time for us to leave our positions, to go do an interview online, get some questions asked by somebody else that may be coming. Time and time again, it's happened, nothing has happened at the other end. And I just ask that reclassification go through. Please work with us so we can all get back to what we need to be doing, as opposed to leaving the kids alone, not being supervised, because we're being pulled to where we shouldn't be. Okay, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Erica San Paulo.
Mine will be very short and quick. My name is Erica San Paulo. Good evening to all of you. I just want to say a few words on behalf of the health technicians, all of them, all 10 of us. We come to work daily to keep our students and staff healthy and safe. I personally have saved a few lives over the course of my 18 years at Everett Alvarez. For the most part, we feel that our importance within the district is often overlooked and unappreciated. I am sure that some of you, a lot of people, just sit around thinking that we're just doing computer entries and passing out Band-Aids and pads. But that is not all that we do. We go far and above and beyond what our current 2001 job classification reads. There are only 10 of us, so that makes us probably one of the smallest groups, if not the smallest in the district. We are responsible for hundreds in middle school and thousands in high school of students each day, which makes, in fact, our job very challenging and very, very stressful on any given day, with all of the drugs, the alcohol abuse, the fights, the illnesses, and everything in between. We do it all. It's not just Band-Aids and pads. We have not had a job reclassification since 2001, and things have changed drastically since then. We are a valuable asset and we deserve to be reclassified and receive better wages for what we do. Please reclassify and increase our wages, so then maybe it will not be so difficult to replace us when we retire.
So next I have Cecilia Rothermel. Rothermel? Rothermel? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cecilia Rothermel. I work at Salinas High School. I'm a Para educator 2. My coworkers and I filled out paperwork and did our interview with Ewing for reclassification. It was a waste of time. Our voices were not heard. We need reclassification to be done now. We did our part. Our job description is outdated. I do so many things beyond what my job description says. You should pay classified employees more money. We have such high turnover. We should, you should pay more money to the classified players that you have now, because we're not going to be here too much longer, the way things are going. Soon, you will lose them. That's what we want. I have more. I'm a Para, in my classroom, we have medically fragile and moderate-severe students. We hand-feed diaper, do hand-over-hand, push wheelchairs, tie shoelaces, restroom, G-tube feeding, we cut, draw, and write for them, and many, many, many more things. Our students are never, ever left alone. We have students with behavioral issues and wheelchairs. We are short-staffed, and one person is doing the job of four people and more. Life-skill Para 2s need and deserve a stipend for all the physical labor and abuse. We have students with behavioral issues. We get kicked, pushed, slapped, pulled, punched. We have to use our own sick hours to go to our workers' comp appointment after we've been hit, kicked, and all that, and I have plenty of that. They know me well at the clinic, unfortunately. They've even told me I need a different job. Sorry. We need reclassification because the work we are expected to do versus other Para 2 is vastly different. It is two different jobs that should be reflected in our job description and pay. Para's that work in the life-skill classroom do different jobs than other classrooms. I invite you to come into my classroom and observe, help diaper a child, feed them, G-tube, come in. Glad you like Salinas High School. So we need this reclassification completed and done now, please, and thank you.
So next I have Cynthia Dennis.
Good evening, board members. My name is Cynthia Dennis. I work at Salinas High School. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the attendants for the high school. On behalf of my fellow coworkers at the high school level for attendance, we would like to address the concerns that we have in regards to reclassification, how long has it taken for the process to be completed? We do not have to hire someone out, hire someone out, instead someone bringing on a retiree that can do the work for us instead, and how much longer it will take, and the issues we are experiencing at each and every other site, the excessive amount of duties we have and not enough manpower and work, and under tremendous amount of stress.
Good evening, respectful board members and members of the Salinas Union High School community. My name is Paloma Hernandez, and I am the Attendance Specialist at La Paz Middle School. Today, with the consent and support, I am also representing the Other Attendance Specialist and Middle School Attendance Office Support Staff. I have been working in the Attendance Office at La Paz Middle School for the last 10 years, and as the years pass, the Attendance Specialist position in the Attendance Office has evolved into more than just recording and reporting students' attendance. I would like to share a brief summary of our job description. According to the job description, the main function of the Attendance Office is to maintain, record, track, and input attendance records for the entire student population, correlating various attendance reports, and providing all types of customer service and supports to the parents, students, and community members. However, as time goes by, we find ourselves with added tasks, responsibilities, and duties categorized under the Other Duties as assigned wording, making the Attendance Office position challenging and overwhelming to keep up due to the limited amount of staff and the high volume of workload expected to be completed in and outside the realm of our actual position. On the handout that we just handed you, we have compiled a list of some additional duties we, as Attendance Office, have come up with of the members that work within the Salinas Union High School District. If you could please take a moment and look at that list. With this being said, the Attendance Department personnel and all of us classified here are long overdue for a reclassification of our positions. We respectfully are requesting that you acknowledge and support us in this matter. Thank you.
Next, I have Cindy Barnes. Cindy Barnes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Barnes, and I am a Para 2 at Salinas High School. This was my original job when I began working there in 2011. I've worked the same position at the same site in the same classroom all these years. I've been through many Para's, and I've been through many teachers. And I'm concerned about us being reclassified, because when the opportunity came up for us, several of us took the time to attend meetings, fill out paperwork, lengthy paperwork, I think it was like six pages back and forth, attended in meetings, and also met with the designate to help us with our reclassification. All this seemed to be a waste of time, and it appeared that our voices were not heard and nor were our concerns addressed. When we would speak to whoever was hired, it was kind of like rambling off, he didn't totally understand everything that we said. We did come across another school that does the same type of thing that we have, and when I began work at Salinas Union High School District, and that work was, my classroom is labeled medically fragile. So not only do we have blind students and deaf students and MS and MD and everything you can think of all jumbled into one, we now have autistic students that have been mixed in, and we have the pleasure of serving these severe and vulnerable students. We love our job. I actually work with Cecilia. What I wanted to say was that these last couple of years, students with behaviors, and that's what they call them, I don't call them behaviors, I have another word for what they do, but these students require one-on-one aides, they have been placed in our classrooms with very medically fragile students, and students who can't defend themselves when something happens to them. Literally what Cecilia said about them having to hand-feed a student or diaper them or G-tube-feed them or whatever, or throw their hand on the desk because they can't even lift their own hand to grab their pencil hand-over-hand, these other students have been placed in our classroom that are hurting our students. And it's not okay. I mean, one of our students took scissors and cut my hair. What if she would have poked me in the eye with it, you know? Who knows? Or another student. And she wasn't even one of the bad students. She was a sweet girl, but that day, you know, she required a one-on-one, and we have lots of students that require one-on-ones. And so not only as the time has gone on, not only, yeah, not only as the time has gone on that these students were medically fragile, they've now put these more severely abusive and violent and not knowing what's going to happen, right, with these students? And we're being physically abused by them. I probably have just as many workman's comp injuries that I've had to go to doctors on duties for, but I know many other aides and behavioral specialists that are having to be out on workman's comp for months and months and months. I know teachers that have gotten desks thrown at them, teachers that have gotten file cabinets thrown at them, and teachers that have never come back to work after it. I know aides that have walked out of the classroom because of the stress and the high, high-intense idi that happens there, the behaviors. It's behaviors, that's what they call it. Oh, those are his behaviors, those are her behaviors. We need this reclassification and these students that we have in our medically fragile classrooms, it's not safe for students and it's not safe for staffs. And if it is not that Para's can be reclassified, there should be like, if we have to have these physically abuses and we have to go through them, I mean, I've gotten several of them this year alone, if we have to do that, then I believe that we should receive a stipend for it. I mean, I'm not military, I was never trained in combat, but I kind of feel like I need to be. And when we're given an opportunity to take, they give us a training on, what is it called? It used to be called Handle with Care. We do care about our kids, and we do try to handle them well, but it's not enough. We do care about our kids and we do try to handle them well, but it's not enough, a little, a little bit of training. I heard that through another district, MCOE, that they do 16 hours of that same training when they get hired.
Ms. Barnes, can you wrap it up? You'll be on three minutes.
My last one. Yes, so I just respectfully ask that you would reconsider the reclassification for everybody and that would you look at our, please, job descriptions that we have because they are definitely outdated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, next I have, I have two people on one slip, Dove Garcia and Michelle Bonilla. Oh, and more.
This is the team. Good evening, board members of Salinas Union High School District. Thank you for having us today. My name is Michelle Bonilla and my team behind me is my team of campus supervisors. We are proud campus supervisors who work at Alisal High School. We are gathered here today to inform you about who we are, the work that we do, and to speak up about our demands and the hopes for future education and for our educators. To start off, I want to emphasize that in our position as campus supervisors, our initial role is to ensure the safety of students and all of those people in the campus, including ourselves. What we do is that we are the first to respond and the last to leave any situation every day of the week. Unfortunately, and it saddens me to say, we are the least paid out of everyone. So, just to share the list of other things that we do that are not part of the job description and to let you know that we do go far and beyond to keep students safe and support them, is that we are the counselors when they need us and when they don't want to talk to anyone else, they find comfort in us. The students tend to feel safer with us since they are more familiar with us. They see us every day. When they need help, they go to us. And oftentimes, they go to us instead of their own family, instead of other people that happen to work there. We are also teachers when there is no sub. We stand by the classrooms when there's no one to supervise and it is pretty often when that happens. So when there's no teacher during the whole period, we stand by and it's without proper compensation. When teachers are not answering or present at the designated times, we have to leave our assigned areas and that makes us have issues of safety. On rainy days, stormy days, no matter the weather, we are there, out handling traffic control and having the authority control to control the crowds when there's like really busy events, anything like that, we are there. We provide guidance, mentorship, and instruction. We're also part of the community. A lot of us are born and raised and we know Salinas, we know the students, we are familiar with them and their backgrounds. And we know that we are obvious targets. We wear our brown, bright orange vest, so it makes us, you know, be at risk. We also participate in weekly meetings with our administrators and other campus supervisors to discuss assigned school sites, the upcoming events, the team coordination, and student and class management and authority control. And we also have supervisors that work in the detention center, so at times they have to leave their assigned area to work on other things. With that being said, we demand and would appreciate getting a better and updated job description, one that aligns with what we really do, and we also demand a higher raise. Though we love, honor, and take pride in what we do, we do need this and we ask for your support in this. We hope you can take some time to look into this, especially given that we are essential workers to the school and to the community. Your support can change the future and as they say, if you don't change anything, how can you expect anything to change? I personally just will speak for myself at this moment, but one day, you know, in the future, if I become a parent, I would hope that the district does more in regards to this as well, just because campus supervisors are really the people who are there every day. You leave your child at school hoping and trusting that the staff will take care of them and that is what we do. Thank you for listening. We appreciate your time and we hope that this isn't something that you forget about but really take in into matters.
So next, I have Ramiro Villanueva.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm very glad to be here and thank you for the opportunity to meet you. And I'm talking for the drivers. My name is Ramiro Villanueva. I'm a school bus driver and this is my partner. And our priority and number one thing is safety. We're here for the kids. And I think the we recently, we have a good news. We have an increase of salary and we appreciate that and we have to thank you and thanks to the teachers that support us and we, and they are our backups and they count on us too. So, I'm going to the point and I would like to tell you a few things that we are concerned in. One of the concerns that we have is that we're looking to work and recently in the bids for the routes, we have been cutting hours. We used to have a lot of routes for eight hours and now we're struggling. We only have six, six hours, seven hours. So, basically, this is the bad news besides the salary that we have increased. So, we are struggling because we all have families. The cost of living is really high and you should know better than us because I think you are in the same situation. I put in your shoes and hopefully you look down because we feel that we are the minority. But we think we are the best because we are the first to see the kids and we are the last. The kids are. Thank you so much. Do you want to agree something else before the time's gone?
My name is Marisol and I work in transportation as well. I support my drivers. I am not a bus driver, but I do drive with them every single day. And sometimes I feel like they're not looked into, like their job is important and I feel like they're just like, oh, we're just driving around. But they deal with parents, they deal with teachers, they deal with students, and they deal with traffic. And I feel like that needs to be looked upon and taken into consideration because there's drivers that have been working for 15, 20-plus years and they don't feel appreciated. There's drivers that just started and they're only $3 below them. So imagine how that makes them feel, putting so many hours, so many, so many years into work. So I'm here to support my drivers 100%.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, members of the board. My name is Arturo Esparza. I am a school bus driver also for the district students. I am here to tell you that reclassification process and longevity, longevity is hurting us, affecting. The district is adding responsibilities without taking anything away. And there is a little longevity for us. We deserve to be respected and well-paid. The cost, the cost of living in California is some of the reasons many people are moving to other states. We love our job and the mission to transport our students, the future of our nation. Thank you very much.
So those are the blue slips I have for tonight.
I said a blue slip and I would like to speak?
You can, you can speak. When you came up, I asked for the names of people that were there, so.
I'm sorry, I thought.
That's okay.
I'm Laura and say correct. Twenty, let me think, 35, 37 years with the district, starting in August. Honorable board members, I want to start with the story of a Pacific Island village that had the custom of requiring a dowry from young men who asked for a woman's hand in marriage. Two cows or three cows was the customary price. There was a young woman expected never to marry because she was scrawny, she was basically ugly. No one, no suitor ever approached her or offered a cow. So the entire village was buzzing with gossip when news found out that someone offered her five cows, five cows for this woman. A few months later, they came back to the village to visit. Upon arrival, they were startled, the most beautiful, confident woman they had ever seen. Assuming she was a servant and thinking that the homely young bride must feel terrible in her presence, they asked, where's the wife? "That's my wife," he smiled. What happened to transform her? Have you ever thought what it does to a woman to know that her husband bartered with her father to pay the lowest possible price for her? I wanted my wife to be able to hold her head high and say, I wanted to know she was more than any other woman. I wanted a five-cow wife. In societal denomination, domination practices in which there has been a history of suppression in which certain groups are cast, are treated less than others. I believe that is the current situation here at the Salinas High School District, which I'm very sad to say, saddens me, in which the classified bargaining unit is receiving less than the rest of the groups in terms of their salary. Hierarchy has a huge play in this because it is so blatant. Since we have had the Me Too clause in our bargaining unit, every time a raise was given, we were left farther and farther behind the other staff who received a larger portion due to their larger salaries, which grants them much larger raises. The clause served its purpose and we did appreciate it through the years, but the percentages and the piece of the pie has gotten smaller and smaller. The gap between the bargaining units has grown immensely and it's a huge concern for us. The promises of the reclassification would take care of that. Many years later, sitting in theaters, filling out paperwork, spending large amounts of money regarding the reclassification, nothing has happened. I don't believe we need another study to do the next right thing because we've already had many years of studying. We've already done this and we've already waited patiently. As with the husband in the story, have you ever thought what it does to the employee's self-esteem to receive less and less than the majority of the groups for years at a time? Of course, it makes you feel less valued. So I would like to challenge you as to when are we going to receive compensation of our full value as in, as our bargaining teams? There's also, I have been trying to get in reference to my cow purrs, this is a different matter, but I wanted to purchase extra service credit and I've been asking for three months and they, they haven't given the information. So by law, they're obligated to do so. So I would like to ask if I could get some help on that too, while you're at it. So maybe if we can resolve all this, I could retire.
Great. So those are the blue slips we have for tonight.
We have one that was submitted but not yet out.
So if they come after the meeting starts, then they're not addressed until the following time? What's the name? So Claudia's not in my, my packet, but if the board would like to hear from Claudia, then we can hear from Claudia.
Okay, sure.
Good evening. I'm going to read this on behalf of Claudia, but her and her teammates are going to be standing in support. We are the ELSS, English Learner's Student Support, but we feel our title would be more fitting if it were English Learner's Secretary, since our job aligns a lot to that of a secretary. It has been approximately five years since we have waited for reclassification. We have gone through two reclassifications and it seems like only certain positions have been reclassified. We feel like we are always left out. Every time we ask about reclassification, we are told that reclassifying classified staff would be a great cost to the district. However, at the same time, new management positions are being created. This makes your classified staff across the district feel unappreciated and not important. 2001, our job description was changed and it has not been updated in 22 years. The cost of living has increased and yet our range is very low. Our range should be at least 20 or above. We not only administer the ALPEC test, we do a variety of duties besides assisting the EL specialists. We are responsible for maintaining current information and synergy. We do discipline calls for teachers. And the major purpose of our job is to identify every student, not just English learners, but all students. We support EL students outside of the classroom setting. Our job is to ensure the students have the correct schedules, are in the right program, and get the correct services according to their needs. We are considered our own department. EL clerks, we welcome, as EL clerks, we welcome new students into schools and provide them with student supplies. This includes school IDs, Chromebooks, textbooks, PE clothes, and a campus tour. We want to ensure new students feel comfortable. We are also responsible for all clerical work within our department. We mail out parent letters and ELAC flyers, keep EL update test scores in their Q file, update synergy, prepare records for EL specialists and administration, make parent phone calls, and schedule individual parent meetings with EL specialists, assist EL parents with their needs. ALPEC tests all new students and long-term EL students with the summative ALPEC, record-keeping for state compliance, et cetera. When students come to us for help and we cannot help them with their immediate needs, we refer them to the appropriate personnel or outside agencies. We feel that this reclassification matter should have been taken care of the very first time reclassification was done. We hope this time you take the time to review and consider all the work we do for our English learners. We want to be heard. We want all the board members to be aware of what's happening with reclassification. We hope this time you take part in it, not just on our reclassification, but all of the classified staff trying to reclassify. We are classified. We are the backbone of the schools who keep them operating daily throughout the year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Claudia. So we can move on on?
Presentations.
Presentations.
You just have the one?
Yeah, just the one.
Community Human Services, Student Services?
Yeah, so we, we did this board recognition already.
Hello, board members. Good evening, board members. My name is Ochit Salanya. I am from Community Human Services and I represent Los Angeles High School.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Jacob Frias. I'm the lead drug resource specialist for the SUB program, or Substance Use Prevention Program, and I'm located at North Salinas High School. Okay, like you can see on, on the presentation is, the first slide is pretty much like a, like an overview, a summary of all the counselors. I mean, pretty much we are in all high schools and middle schools.
So the Substance Abuse Prevention Program, SUB, is a school-based counseling program for students. The program aims to provide social, emotional support to students, address and identify substance use and abuse issues. It focuses on substance use prevention and education and anger manage, anger management techniques, drug-free social recreation, and provides additional support to students and their families.
For the individual counseling, we meet one-on-one with the kids. We typically get the referrals through reports for assistance and, as well as our meetings in the wellness centers or PBIS. And this, the referrals are submitted, you know, everyone can, can submit their referral, teachers, parents itself, even students. It's not limited. We don't have a cap, so pretty much we can see anybody.
So next program we have is a Seven Challenges Program curriculum. So the Seven Challenges is an evidence-based program which provides counseling as well as interactive journal for youth who are involved in substance abuse. So the brief, and then we have the Brief Challenges Program, which is a shorter version of the Seven Challenges. It is for those students who are experimenting, are in first stages of use, or got a second vape offense. vape offense.
We also have the Youth Alternatives to Violence, which is the anger management class. It's a A-session program, and pretty much the, the, the program kind of concentrates in providing the students with coping skills, being able to identify emotions, go over where the issues are affecting the behavior, and then, you know, we continue and work with them based on their need. So it's pretty much like, even though we have a curriculum, it is each, each student, the program is mortified to fulfill the needs of the kid.
So then, we also have the DACT program, which is Alcohol and Drug Awareness Prevention Team. So this is a, a student-led club that focuses on substance use, substance use prevention. So the Drug Resource Specialists at each site facilitate the club. However, the students are actively coordinate fundraising events and educational events for the students. So students who actively participate in the club earn community service hours towards their graduation.
We also have the Vape Offense Workshop. This program was initiated per the request of Salinas High. It started like maybe like three, four years ago. This one is specifically for the admins to refer because of the disciplinary punishment or the guidelines that go through, you know, the district. Only, like I mentioned, only the admins refer because they met with the kid, as well with the parent, and all three, they signed, which I show you, this is pretty much like the referral that the admins use. And they, the, the admin is the one that kind of explains a little bit about what it is and what they're signing, and as well as they can see what is going to happen, what are the requirements for them to complete based on the offense. Like you can see first, you know, first offense is Vape Offense Workshop, the second offense is Brief, which is like a, pretty much like moving forward with, you know, the, the need for the substance use, as well as, you know, third offense is for the Seven Challenges Program, which is a little more lengthy, like it was explained earlier. This one, it takes around three, three, six to nine months. It all depends on, on the student, because all of them are student-driven.
So we also do presentations and consultations. So we're available to provide presentations for extracurricular activities, such as a drug contract signing, middle school and high school parent meetings, health classes. We're available to assist with consultations with parents, teachers, administrators, school staff regarding students involved and related issues to substance abuse.
Additionally, with the presentations, we also, we can provide the outreach or the resources for elementary schools and middle schools. Most likely, the community liaison or the one that, that is in charge of bringing guests or speakers to the parents, most likely in the coffee, what do they call it? We want, when they have their meetings, they, cafecitos, we, you know, we get invited for us to present. Most like, most recently, I have presented in, in two elementary schools to, to present the information about vaping. So parents get familiar with the information, what they look like, what to look for. So the, I, we believe that the more we get, more information we get in the community, the parents are going to be a little more prepared as the kids move on throughout academics.
So some challenges we've faced this year, we have shared and limited space to provide services. Some sites, we don't have enough kind of offices for some of our Drug Resource Specialists. We have hiring and training new Drug Resource Specialists that we've acquired over the past couple of months. Some admins do not, don't send over the referrals to the Drug Resource Specialists sometime, and we have all been able to help with covering Mount Toro, Car Lake, and Ar Puente, and we have to step away from our site.
Okay, so right now, we're going to go over the, the yearly data that, you know, that we want to present to you guys. So in the chart, you guys can see what are, you know, the programs and which one is being mostly utilized. For example, like the twenty-seven percent, I can say that, or the most common ones are obviously, you know, the substance use prevention programs. For example, like Brief, BAO, mostly specifically because, based on the breakdown of the many referrals that get referred to us is because of, they get caught with anything related to vaping, either because they have a car, or they have a pen, or they have a container that smells of marijuana, but, you know, anything that's related to substances, we, we see that most likely is for the Vape Offense Workshop or BAO, which how it gets referred in school. For Brief, or Seven Challenges, which, like I said, they can be in Brief, and if they collect a second offense, they can move up for Seven Challenges. But again, it's, the many referrals that we collect throughout the year is based on the need on the school, as well as the admin referring or the staff referring the students to us. So all the, you can see the seven, six hundred ninety-seven that we saw throughout the academic year are accepted services, meaning that when we met with the kid, they accepted. There has been only a few percentage, very few students that declined, but, you know, we're happy to say that the majority that get referred were able to, you know, seat them and provide the service that they were assigned to.
So now we go to demographic. We have age of first use for students. As we can see, about forty-nine percent is students that are about...
Thirteen to sixteen.
Thirteen to sixteen years old. And then we have, with sixteen percent, we have nine to twelve-year-olds, and then so forth.
In this one, it's like, the, the two majority, which is the forty-nine percent and thirty-four percent, is like, now that we have added counselors in middle schools, you know, the age range obviously is lower compared to previous years that we only have high school. It was most likely thirteen to sixteen, but now it goes lower because of the middle school kids. And for the gender, again, now we can see that it's almost a kind of a equivalent, like equal, like the forty-nine to fifty-one percent. Previous years, it was mostly males and females, but as the years pass by, we can see that now it's getting kind of like equal. For the race, again, majority Hispanic. There's, you know, the, there has been only very few African-American students or, you know, students that, you know, you know, there are white, Caucasian, or from a different ethnic city. But again, like I said, the majority, you know, is Hispanic. And that concludes our presentation. I think we can leave it open for questions if you have any.
Anybody questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Natalia, and I am actually the District Representative for the Community Human Services Committee, and so I just received from Ms. McCray, your CEO, kind of like the, I wanted to see like numbers, give me numbers, how many students are you servicing? And so she gave me the annual report that goes into, you know, how many students have been serving the last, the last year anyways.
Yes.
But my question to you is, and maybe we can meet, you know, another time to kind of go into specifics on... Per, per school. So how many staff members do you have available for each school site? And you're, we're talking about high schools and middle school, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's one counselor per site.
Per site. How many hours are, are they there full-time?
Yes.
And so you said you don't necessarily have a designated site. I believe all the high schools and the junior highs have the Wellness Center. Are you not utilizing that space? Are you not allowed to use that space for that?
Not all of us are in the Wellness Center. There's only a few of us that we are located inside. I'm myself, I'm, like I said, I'm North Salinas, I, I am in, inside the Wellness Center, as well as like the counselor at La Paz. The counselor who, what, that is, and, I'm sorry, the one that is at El Salas, she's in, the one that is at La Paz was at the Wellness Center, and she was placed in the main office. Again, each admin individually decided where they want to place the counselor based on office spaces. So each, each site is going to determine where the, the DRS is going to be.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just would like to, like, maybe meet with you at a different time, just kind of go over some more specifics on the services. Glad that you're, you know, there servicing the students. Appreciate your word.
Thank you.
And information.
Anybody else?
No, just thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Very much. Okay, District Communications, CSCA, SVFT.
Mine's going to be short and brief. You have heard the classified regarding reclassification. So my question to the board and cabinet is, when are you going to approve the proposal I set forth regarding hiring a consultant to do the work? We cannot do it by ourselves. We did, it took us three hours for one job description. That's not enough time for all of us. So what I'm asking you as employees for the classified here, when are you going to give a directive to HR and finish reclassification once and for all? They all deserve job descriptions. Stop procrastinating, and let's get this done. Thank you, SVFT, for supporting classified.
Good evening, board and cabinet members. I just want to ask, do I need to have Juan Campos come in here to have the air conditioning turned on?
You saw two of us.
It does work, right? Okay, well, we're just going to leave it at seventy-eight degrees in here.
It says the batteries need to be changed.
Okay. Well, I will, I will, we'll, we'll try and get some batteries. So be, I'll be very brief. I wanted the board to know that SVFT completed negotiations with the district. This was negotiations for twenty-two, twenty-three. It was over eighteen months of negotiating. And I'm going to put everything in context with what you heard tonight. If HR is done with negotiations with SVFT, it's time to focus on CSCA. The second member, representatives of SVFT met with district representatives on a professional development planning day last Friday. We met from four o'clock to nearly seven o'clock to start the plan, to see if the PD days, to start the next school year, what they would look like. And I will share that we have mentioned CSCA needs to be part of it, and I think that we will get them there. But for now, we're starting. We're meeting again this Friday from two o'clock until probably six or seven. SVFT is very serious about this. If we're going to plan district-wide PD to meet the needs of students, it needs to be done thoughtfully. And lastly, you've heard from the community members and your employees tonight. And I am so proud to be an employee of this district, to walk into a room with fellow employees who I have known for years, and I have been with this district since nineteen ninety-seven. And to know that I can sit next to administrators, I can sit next to campus supervisors, I can hug EL clerks and bus drivers, because we see all of ourselves as equals. We educate students, and we are passionate about our students. It is time to take care of classified folks, every class, and have them earn a living wage so that they feel as valued as I know the students see them, because they work for our students. I want to recognize everyone in this audience who are committed to the students in this district, as you are as board members. Thank you.
I just want to say that I think it's too bad that HR's not here today to have heard all these comments, but I think you could hear the meeting, because I think that those, some of these comments need to be heard by him. I think that it's, it is unfortunate, and it happens in a lot of districts where the reclass process just takes so long. But we did get an update in closed session. I know I can't talk about what we heard, but I'm hoping that we can get another update to find out where we're at and what do, what needs to get done, because I thought we were really close to being done. So if we can get an update on that, that would be really helpful.
I missed the last meeting, so I wasn't able to give my update on my attendance to my Community Human Services meeting, but she did forward me, and I afforded to be in whoever would like it, on their annual report and how many, you know, my question was, was, how many, how many students are they serving and what are the, you know, services they're providing, so the perfect timing. My, and maybe we can get a, maybe a presentation sometime soon, because I know that the Wellness Center, there's, we have the Monterey County Behavioral Health staff there, then we have our staff, and, I mean, I would think it makes perfect sense to have Community Human Services in there as well, because they're providing similar services, support services for students. So maybe at some point, we could get an, an update or a presentation on what exactly is happening there, you know, how are they collaborating together on, you know, for, you know, are they working well so we're doing the best we can in having outcomes, and we're not, you know, doubling work or not communicating? That was, you know, one of my concerns. And also, when the contracts are up for, or when the contracts are coming before us for the other folks that are working in those Wellness Centers. But that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Daniella?
Maybe you can tell us a little bit about yourself? My name is Danielle, and I'm a student at Everett Alvarez, and I'm just really glad to be in this position as my, like, my last month at, in this district. I'm really glad that I got to be put in this position, and in my future, I'm planning on majoring in political science.
Awesome.
So this is really good experience for me.
Very good. All right.
Well, I'm glad to be back after being bedridden for a week, some bad virus kind of hit our office, and some of our staff members were out. But I appreciate the audience coming out today and just expressing their, their need and what the support they're looking for from us. And we can come together and just pull in our community partners, like there's the Monterey County Behavioral Health, there's Harmony Home, that we can use, especially for special ed. I know that that's a very tough position to fill. We have a large turnover. I have a friend who, who works in special ed, and he tells me how it's kind of hard working on a day-to-day basis, but he stays there because he loves his job. A lot of our members here are staff members, they're here because of the love of the job, but we kind of have to give them the tools that they need and the support, so we can have them, retain them here, and that's the whole purpose of our partnerships with the So I, I know that the reclassification is a big thing, and I know that we are, the district are working on it. Unfortunately, it's not as fast as we want to, but we want to make sure that it's, it's fair for everyone and it's being done the correct way.
Yeah, and I agree. I think it's been said, the reclassification, we heard it loud and clear tonight, so hopefully as, you know, new trustees, this is something that's started way before we were placed on the board, and we hope that someday this can be put to rest. And I know it's emotional, I think a lot of the key points that we raised this evening, so we'll continue to strive as a, as a board to try to make that happen. So, thank you.
I agree, the reclassified, and they are very vital and important part of our district, and we, we need to make sure that we take care of them. And, and I know things have been brewing getting there. It was mentioned about, I just want to learn a little bit more about the job descriptions and how it, how it gets formed with HR, and does CSCA need our help in regard to helping HR with that? Is there another, uh, person? Like, I know there was mention of a consultant, but let me understand the process. And, um, maybe we, as a board, can get together and, um, give our input and make sure that it works well for everybody. And I think it's in, very important, they're a very important part of our, of our, um, district. And another thing I want to mention is, um, we met last week with, um, with a few people of our community regarding Black Lives Matters, uh, uh, regarding, um, our African-American community, um, and our students in working and colla, collaborating with, um, other resources that we have in our community. Because we know as a district, we can't work on our own and we do need other resources. And we would like, well, I would like, I guess the agreement that we came was meeting more outside of district and making, um, dates for meetings. So if we can get those dates from those that were there and from us, and when we can meet again to keep the momentum going and, um, not drop the ball. And that's all I have.
No comments tonight?
Okay. Well, I want to thank the Board for your engagement in the conversations and, and being active listeners. Lots of different things that, uh, we can definitely work on together. Also, I think I saw Pastor Smith and Ms. Smith walk in as well. So wanted to thank, um, both of them and, and members of Building Healthy Communities. Um, as Trustee Luhon indicated, we had a, a really goo, good collective conversation last week. And the next step is, really, I wanted to, um, make sure the focus isn't lost. That the conversation's about anti-black racism in our schools and in our community. There's a lot that we're dealing with, right? We're dealing with, you know, everything we heard tonight, but let's not lose that focus with what that work is about. And the idea really is to build a study session in, maybe on Saturday, uh, mid-morning with the Board and members of the community. So we can really talk about, um, working together with some collective action so that we can, um, address, um, the needs of our community, um, of our, of our African-American, black community. Um, with the end of the year approaching, there's a lot of events. And I know you can't remember all of them. So we'll do our best, um, to make sure you're informed of, um, not just promotion and graduation, but we have top one hundred things. We have senior awards nights. Um, you can't get to all of them, but, um, I believe Trustee Ruby at one point tried to. And, uh, he did, you know, he did his best. Uh, but we'll try to keep you informed so that you get an opportunity to attend all of the events. Also, you know, this is an exciting time for seniors. You're starting to see a lot of the schools, a couple of presentations talked about students, um, receiving their, their acceptance notifications to colleges. Um, and so I, I'm really appreciative of our counselors at our schools for supporting students through that process. It's also a time of anxiety because students haven't received some of their acceptance letters and they're still waiting. And, um, hopefully they'll get their notifications. Or they may not have been accepted to their favorite school. And so our counselors are doing a good job of, of working through that process with them as well. So, um, and, and I'll start highlighting some of them as we go through the, the remainder of the meetings before the end of the year. I did want to point out a couple tonight. So Rancho San Juan, um, Ms. Henry let me know that they have the highest number of students currently accepted to the UC Berkeley, um, in the county. And it might be the highest percentage ever in the county. Um, and then we also had a, a young person from Salinas High School who was accepted to the Air Force Academy, which is very difficult, um, to do. And I know it's just one student and people might say, oh, it's only one student. But it's really, really, uh, a, a big thing. So it's usually one student per region or less. So, um, and there's so many more that we're hearing, so many stories and, and et cetera. So we'll, we'll hear about all the successes as well. Um, at the end of the month, I'm gonna present the annual state of the district report for the Board. So we'll, we'll go through that process together. Um, also do, um, very excited to see the energy that's, um, coming in around our employee housing, um, concepts. And so, uh, tonight you have on the agenda, obviously, we're gonna discuss part of that process. But the excitement is really building with the next steps of selecting those people who, um, will qualify to be in the apartments. And then to do the lottery process and, and then notify, make notifications and start planning to get keys in people's hands by May first. So, um, exciting times coming for, for that work. And then also wanted to highlight, uh, ROP open house was last week. Um, it was moved because of the, um, school cancellations and all the floods back in March. So unfortunately, I know some of you couldn't make it because it conflicted, um, with some of your dates. Then, so we did artwork last time. Tonight, uh, we're gonna adjourn the meeting in the memory of two of our retirees, Jan Yakstimer and Lydia Estrella. Both were longtime employees, um, dedicated over thirty years in our, in this district. Uh, Jan worked as an English teacher and Lydia was an instructional aide in our district. So we'll adjourn in their honor tonight in their passing. So that's what I have.
Okay.
Did I miss anything? What did I miss? Oh, already got it. I got it. Yeah. Okay, action items. Uh, Resolution twenty-three thirty-one, Day of the Teacher. So you get a motion?
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-one, Day of the Teacher.
I second that motion.
Second, Mr. Luhon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirty-two, Jewish American Heritage Month. Motion?
I'm, I'm.
Mr. Kievel, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kies. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-five, Recognition Service, Noelia Kalon, Administration. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirty-three, Raffigation Payment, Tracy Felice.
So moved?
Second, Mr. Luhon. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirty-four, Raffigation Payment for Natalia Carrillo.
So moved?
Oops, seconded.
All in favor?
Energy, everybody needs a soda or something, come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirty-five, Raffigation Payment, Jorge Ross.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirty-six, Classified School Employees Week. Rikiis?
Second.
Second, Luhon. All in favor?
Aye.
Workforce Housing Project, Approve the Residential Lease Agreement and Eligibility and Priority Policy Guidelines. Business, Anna, do you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I just want to give you a quick summary of what we've been working on.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat, I'm dealing with allergies. Okay, so as you all, as Superintendent mentioned, um, workforce housing project was scheduled to close at the end of next week. So I'm hoping that that close is successful and that it does happen by then. Um, so as you know, the Alameda project is located on four hundred and four forty Abbott Street. And, um, the buildings that, um, the district is currently purchasing is building one and two. Okay, right in the corner there. And then behind this space is our parking area. Along with the parking spaces here and then eleven on, on Abbott Street. And, um, you have a total of fifteen, fifty units. And they consist of two studios that are, um, one bath, twenty-two units that are one bed, one bath, eight units that are two bed, one bath, and then eighteen units, two bed, two bath. And, um, the units are on the second and third story. And then the level floor is commercial space. And the commercial space is between ten thousand five hundred to eleven thousand square feet in each building. Excuse me. And, um, we also have, um, laundry rooms on each end of the building. So second and third floor for each of the buildings, you have laundry rooms on, on both ends. It includes a play area, a fitness center, and then some co, a common room. A common room that can be used, uh, but if you, if the tenants would like to use it for private parties, they can go ahead and, um, put a deposit down and use it for the day. And then, of course, a deposit would be returned, returned after their event. The funding, as you are aware of, is funding, the cost of the, of this facility is twenty-three point five million dollars. And, um, it is funded with Measure W and the Certificate of Participation. Certificate of Participation is ten million dollars and Measure W will be funding thirteen point five million dollars. Our ongoing cost for this project, um, is COP payment, which our first payment is next June of twenty twenty-four. Um, the property management firm, we have housekeeping of twenty-five hundred dollars a month. That includes the clean of the common areas, the hallways, the elevators and stairs. And, um, two thousand five hundred for the gym use. And the gym, that includes everything, the cleaning, janitorial and everything for the, for the gymnasium. And then the landscape, seven hundred and twenty dollars a month. And then also utilities. Um, I don't have an estimate for utilities yet, but that is also going to be an ongoing cost, obviously. The projected rental rates for the studio, we have two studios, as I mentioned earlier. And the market rate is between eighteen hundred and eighteen fifty. And these are the rates for the units that are going to be rented next door to this property. And the reason why they have a range here is because some of the units have some unique, um, uniqueness to them. So what they're doing is for those that have something that are unique, um, they're gonna go ahead and, um, cha, charge a little more for that, for those units. So as you can see here for the studio, one bath, the market rate is eighteen hundred to eighteen fifty. And then all the other, you know, rates are listed that I'm not gonna go, um, and, and discuss each one. So the way this works is what the district did is we took the lowest of the market rate. So for example, for the studio one bath, we're, we're calculating the seventy percent mark, um, market rate at the eighteen hundred. So it's at the lower end. And, um, and for the beginning, unless I'm told different by the, by the Board, because we haven't approved or said, the rental rates are not included in any of the documents that you're going to be, that you're going to be approving today. The thought is that we would just go with the lower, with the market rate, whatever the low amount is, and not charge any additional for any of the units that have anything unique to them. Um, for this first time go around, right? I mean, if we want to change that in the future, we can bring that back. And then if you would like for us to proceed with that change, we can. But for the time being, the plan is for us to go ahead and just charge equal amounts regardless of what the unit looks like. So the one studio, one bath, it's, um, one thousand two hundred and sixty. And then you'll see that the two-bedroom, two-bath, one thousand seven hundred and fifty. The eligibility and priority guidelines, um, we reviewed those very closely, had a really good discussion as a committee. And, um, for today, I'm gonna go ahead and just give you a brief, um, overview of what they, what they, what it includes. So for the eligibility and priority guidelines, the maximum length of tenancy is five years with the option, um, for, for the employee to reapply after the fifth year. However, because we want to make sure that all the employees get an equal opportunity to take advantage of this program, take benefit of this program, um, they would have to be placed, of course, on the waiting list. If there's nobody on the waiting list and they reapply, then definitely, of course, you know, they can maintain, um, and stay in the unit. Um, we also added a recruitment tool, meaning that for the first year, we're going to set aside five units for recruitment. And, um, if these units are uncommitted on August first, we'll go ahead and we'll release them on that date for those individuals that are on the waiting list. The minimum household per apartment, um, the reason why we set this is because we want to make sure that, um, you know, depending on, say, for example, if you have a family that would like to, um, lease a two-bedroom, two-bath, we want to make sure that we have at least three individuals living in that unit and not just one or two, right? And the program is not available to management or the superintendent. Um, it's just for classifieds.
That's not in the report.
I wanted to make sure he's paid attention, right? And then, um, we, and then also the priority categories. So the priority categories are listed here. And as you can see that these, um, priorities addresses full-time employees and part-time employees. Okay, so it just depends. And those are actually detailed in your priority and guidelines, um, eligibility and priority guidelines. And then we move on to the, um, area medium household income. So currently, what this states is the employees that, um, have a household of one, their income criteria needs to be between forty-five thousand and seventy-two thousand eighty. And the same thing for, you know, as you can see, the chart is listed here for you. And the source that we used for this was Department of Housing and Community Development. As far as the residential lease agreement, um, we provided that in the agenda. It's a twenty-five-page document. And, um, I think one of the things that I would want you to know, because we did have a lengthy conversation with the committee in regards to the security deposit. So the security deposit is going to be equal to one month's rent. And, um, and then with that, we also have our property management firm, Coast and Valley Property Management, Aitmin Salmina. And she is going to be the property manager for this, um, project. And it's been great to have her be a part of our meetings, our last two meetings. She's been providing a lot of information to us and I would like to introduce her. Are you doing it? Yeah. If we come up, I'd like to introduce you to the Board of Trustees.
Hi, my name is. Nice to meet you. Um, so we're a local management company. We're located in downtown Salinas. I'm fourth generation Salinas native, so been here all my life. Had, two of my kids so far graduate Salinas High School, another one in the, in the district right now. And I have a little six-year-old, but, um, so we manage about eight hundred and fifty units. Um, I manage the other side for the Herred family. So I'm super excited that, um, they gave the opportunity to the school district because this is so very much needed. Um, as we can see, I think it was like a perfect opportunity to talk about what you guys have going on. And I can't believe how much your Board has to deal with. I sit on two boards that are not like this. It's, this is really intense. You guys do a lot. Uh, but I, it's, you know, the amount of money and, and, and the things that you guys are doing and the contracts. And I mean, this just really couldn't come at a better time. So I'm, I'm really excited to be a part of that. And, um, this is a really, really wonderful project. And, uh, it's super nice. So I hope everybody will have, be able to see that. Um, on the fif, on the Fourth of May, we're gonna be having a grand opening. So it's for everybody, it's welcome. Um, and I, and I have it set through the Chamber of Commerce. We're gonna be having an open house. Um, it's not just for the district side, it's for the other side as well. And giving some recognition of really what our district is doing for our community and our, and our teachers and our staff. And, um, and what this local family has done for our, for our, um, local community and for our staff. And, um, it's really exciting, so I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Amy. It's just me having you on and helping us through the meetings and just giving us some information in regards to some of the things that are so important that we don't really, I mean, do, right? We don't run a, a residential business, but it's been great, been a rain on law from Amy. So thank you.
Thanks, oh, anytime.
And I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I lost you in the crowd.
No.
My apologies. And, um, with that, I also would love to thank the, um, Workforce Housing Committee. They have put in a lot of work. As I said, we have had multiple meetings and sometimes, you know, some of the topics that we discussed were not easy. But I, I like the collaboration. We have all been, you know, um, looking through the same lens. We're united to make sure that our employees take advantage of this great program. And we are very excited as a committee to be able to offer this and bring this information forward to the Board. And, um, with that, I'd like to, you know, I'd love to, um, pronounce their names because they're just, I'm just really grateful with the, for the work that they have done. So we have Lucy Vega, she's a CSCE president. Katie Vassler, she's SVFT president. Carlos Rubio, our Board President. We also have Tracy Felice, our Vice President for the Board. Matt Huerta, he's the owner of Matt Huerta Consulting. Ray Herred, which is the owner of Herred Construction, the developer. And then Karen Luna, our Consultant. Um, Edgar Reski, fellow Director of General Services. And Zetim, um, ITAR, Community and Public Relations Officer. And, um, I just really want to say thank you to the committee for all the work that they have done. And with that, I mean, I'm gonna open it up to any questions. But, um, the recommendation for today is that you approve the lease agreement and the, um, eligibility and priority guidelines that are in your packet.
Thank you, great presentation, thank you. Um, can you, um, share with us? I'm curious of what the uniqueness of some of the rooms are or some of the apartments.
Definitely, definitely.
What is that?
Yes, so if you, um, if looking at, say, for example, the corner of Abbott and, and Alameda, right in the corner, and that, you know, for me, that really stood out, right? So when you walk onto the, when you walk into the units that are So when you walk onto the, when you walk into the units that are right in the corner, the the walls are rounded and it's it's all windows. So right when you walk in, it just feels like you're walking into this really beautiful spacious space with the balconies right next to that, right? So I mean, so they're not all exactly the same. Some of them have balconies in certain spaces where the sun hits really nice in the morning. It's a little bit more private. So they are definitely some really unique architectural that they took in play here when they planned this project. Very nice, and I can't wait for all of you to see it.
And then my second question is on the priorities, that was a lot of priorities. And so was those developed by the committee?
Yes, yes.
And who, I mean, so the the company is gonna be working on the priorities?
Definitely following the guidelines, yes, and the priorities, correct.
Wow, you got a lot of work to do. That's intense.
Some of the senior strategic properties, right? So like you have to qualify your income, we have to verify it every year and.
But that's the difference between following these priorities. There's just so so many. So anyway, I just wanted to ask if that was something that the district did or it was the committee together?
So we did as a district, so we went ahead and we put, you know, the recommendations in place, right? And then we discussed them with the committee, what they meant, you know, what are other options? And then also some of the committee members went on their own and they looked into what other employee housing what they had in place, and then they brought those recommendations forward. So when I said it was a collaboration between all the committee members and the district, it truly was.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anna, thank you for putting this together. I'm looking here at, for example, household of one, income between fifty, that's an area median income, fifty percent to eighty percent, forty-five thousand, so that's about roughly about twenty-three dollars an hour you have to be making to be able to qualify. So if I'm thinking correctly, I mean, our supervisors who tend to be some of the lowest paid, are they gonna be able to afford and move into these units?
Yes, and it just really depends on, we currently, right now, the structure that we currently have for campus supervisors, as we mentioned at the last board meeting, a lot of them are part-time, right? And we're thinking of reclassifying those, some of these positions, correct? But so, for example, when we're looking at the classified salary schedule, if you're a full-time employee, you would need to be on range, for example, twenty-one, which are, we do have a lot of classification between range twenty-one and forty-seven that would be eligible to apply now. Let's say, for example, if they're married, right, it's by household income. So it just really depends on the household income. And we did, we conducted a survey of employees, and we had good participation from CSA and SVFT on individuals that are interested and that would qualify. So we had over two hundred surveys. And, for example, for classified, I think we had a hundred and fifteen, and out of those a hundred and fifteen, about eighty of them would qualify for this program. And that's and that's assuming, say, for example, the other ones that don't, at this time, we didn't ask them for their household income, we only asked them for their personal income, right? It was this, it was survey that went out to.
So if you're a part-time employee, then you would qualify under the priority group number four than the last one, right?
Correct, correct. So you can still meet the income criteria if, say, for example, your spouse, right, also works and you're a part-time employee.
But then this would be a lottery, so it really doesn't matter, I mean, which priority you fall under, because it's gonna, you can drop.
So the lottery would only be for the ones that are tied, right? So we have, say, for example, two that are on the waitlist under number three, then that's when we would do a lottery.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, I want to thank, I thank everybody who sat on that committee, but I'm glad that Matt Huerta was part of that. He's so well-versed in affordable housing, all the rules. He was, he was, I'm sure he was just so helpful. So then when you do the the release to, yeah, or, you know, applications are being accepted, is it, are they gonna be able to fill it out online? Do they have to fill out a paper copy and, you know?
That is correct, that is going to be available online.
It's gonna go online? All the staff is aware of when the date that date is and?
So with the plan that we are, you know, putting in place right now, that we're gonna go ahead and put it on our website. And we're gonna work with our IT department. It's gonna be on our website, but it's going to be delivered, so Amy doesn't lose any time, right? So it's gonna be lifetime. Whenever it gets submitted, she sees it right away.
But if if I can add to that.
Yeah.
So employees have already been surveyed for who's interested.
Okay.
And a lot of this information was solicited in that survey. So that part's already really done. And and we have to keep in mind, we have fifty, five zero, units.
I know.
And over two hundred people interested, right? So there might be some folks, the the first roll around, that actually don't get in the first.
Because they don't qualify. You're doing, obviously, a credit background check, all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
All those factors coming into play.
Yes.
Anybody else? I had a question. We have fifty units since Amy's managing both sides. Is one unit per side for a manager? Or is one manager gonna do the whole thing?
So we can, um, change for our one manager. I mean, if it was one owner, we got with the original plan, right? But if it's two separate owners on a different person, we have to have a separate onsite.
Okay, so one, one room.
So one firm, two managers, one on each side.
Okay, so one apartment is gone, then?
Correct, yes, because law states that it's by owner and not by property.
But not technically, not so late. I mean, you still, like, we were only gonna give them a reduced amount of rent, is what happens. And they still have to meet these qualifications. So it's not just like somebody that's, I mean, you're not gonna lose it to an outsider, right? It's still gonna be a staff employee, it's still gonna be something. There's gonna be, happens to be our ID years, you know, on one person, so that qualification doesn't change to lose that space for that one person.
So the one person will be a district employee that will be the manager, and don't, their rent will be reduced even more?
They have to be.
So what's the percentage of that?
So the reduction for that one person, so you can be anybody who live this up, it's maybe anywhere. And so their rent will have to be one-third, they have to be reduced by one-third.
Of their rent, okay. And then do we have an application and a and a process for that?
It's the same process as when we're doing this other stuff. The difference is that when this is something that we were discussing about, we're gonna handle it, that person will not necessarily be chosen by me, I present that person ultimately chosen by you.
Is that on the contract, so they can like check a box that they would like to be that person somewhere?
Yeah, we haven't, yes. So right now, we're still finalizing the application process.
Okay.
Yes.
Most people are gonna select that, right? That's not an issue, and more of us, it's when we're in the interview process and I'm checking their background and all of those things, like part of the interview process is when we're meeting with them. If if they're gonna be that right person, and we sort of know this is who's gonna be the right person, and we will bring you a couple people who we feel this is gonna be the right person for you, I'll bring it to you and she'll go ahead and approach it.
And they're they're only selected for five years too, right?
I mean.
Or is that person?
I mean, it should be, yeah, right, the same qualification, they follow the same guidelines.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So then with those that are coming in, they only have five years. Are we providing any kind of information or homeownership, like, you know, so that they can be prepared during those five years to become homeowners?
So that's our goal, is to get there, we're just not there yet. Because that's gonna be a lot of research on the district hand, right, on things that we can provide. But there are a lot of programs and consultants that we can work with to bring this to them, right? To bring this information to the employees. Because, I mean, that would really, I mean, that would be a great goal, right? To be able to provide them with that information, educate them on what opportunities are available so that they could go ahead and eventually on their own, be able to purchase a home.
Yeah.
Yes.
And with that same thing, you can, you know, what is it, what's it saying? You can give the horse water, but you can't make them drink, you know?
Exactly, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to stay there and talk on the next one then?
We have to do a motion and.
Oh, a motion, okay, never mind. Okay.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And so before we move on, I just wanted to, now that I've met you, Amy, there's high expectations for May Fourth, that we drive the narrative for the day, so we're gonna meet. Okay.
You guys are more than welcome to have some input on that.
No, 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 not input, not input. We're gonna drive it.
But I actually acknowledge the other side, because that's.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We just have a speaker list of people that I think we need to coordinate on.
Oh, absolutely. And so I'm already working with your person, just so you're aware.
Perfect.
We already sort of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Next item, award leaseback agreement, site lease agreement and sublease agreement for construction of the Salinas High School new two-story building project.
I know, it's just, I mean, this is looking for a motion to approve. Do we have any questions?
Did you want to talk on it a little bit?
Um, no, I mean, unless you have any questions, I'm more than happy to talk on that. So this is for the leaseback agreement for the Salinas High School, two-story building.
Any questions? Yeah, all right.
So would would this be the only proposal we receive from Delvec and Sons? Or do we receive multiple proposals?
So for this project? So for this project, we received two, but the other one was incomplete. So we're moving forward with this one, but we still went through the scoring process. And this, they actually ranked, you know, with the recommendation for us to bring it forward for approval.
I just want to make sure that we're on track as far as the the building date that we have, you know?
Yes.
If we say we're building by this date, make sure we follow timeline and build by that.
Definitely, definitely. And the contract does include liquidated damages. There is a section on that in the agreement that you were approving today. And the plan is that, you know, as soon as these projects, especially now this one's under, you know, being approved, we'll be providing an update to the board and not through Tracy, as are toward our facilities, maybe, you know, through our facilities department, not every other month, to provide you with an update so that you know the progress and how we're moving on these, all these special projects that we have coming.
Yeah, because we had this where cats delay so many projects that we don't wanna follow.
That's definitely right, yes, we're on the same page.
Okay, anybody else? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the leaseback.
Second?
I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, informational items. First reading of board policy, six one five eight point one, independent study.
Is there any questions about that? So what you have in that document is things that are underlined and things that are scratched out or struck out, striked out. Those are legal changes to what we can offer for independent study. So take a look, if you have questions, let me know.
Any questions? Have you all looked at it? Okay, can I have a motion?
No, you don't.
No, no, it's information. Moving on.
So.
Okay, justice, equality, diversity, inclusion update.
So we have a presentation. So I'm introduced to you are Jedis, Leticia Diaz Garcia and Tamisha Allen Smith. And they have an update on what we're doing with diversity, equity, inclusion and justice.
Good afternoon, or good night? Mr. Burns mentioned, we're Leticia Diaz Garcia and.
Tamisha Allen Smith.
And they're with the Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinators for the district, and we're excited to be here to provide some updates and let you know what's going on, what's been going on with our position.
So a few of our goals at a glance, we've been able to cover a few things. This is a foundational first-year position. And so some of the things that we have been driving based on the goal that we're working on, based on the district's key strategies for the year is professional development, youth engagement, celebrations, awareness and education, grants and frameworks. So we'll be going into depth a little bit about what we've been doing throughout the year. I emailed you an updated link.
When? If it was if it was after five today. We can share that afterwards. Do you have what you're looking for with it?
It has more information.
It has more information. Can we table it?
Yeah, let me take a look.
It's a link to your email.
In my email, though?
Yes. But in the meantime, while you're taking notes and while we're getting that, I want to share with you a pen that has a statement on what we are covering, embracing culture, and this is.
Thank you.
A takeaway, of course, a takeaway from one of our celebrations.
Thank you. We like it.
Marcus, do you have that?
Nice, I like this.
There you go. So you have a file, and then you also have.
To that computer? Let me see the thumb drive, I'll save it on the thumb drive.
Cool, cool, cool.
So thank you for being patient with us, I mean.
I have babies crying at home, that's okay.
But the one I'm loading is different. So give me just a second.
We were talking about trustee request forms.
We ran out.
Now she told me where it's at, that you can be getting a bunch of them. We have a lot of questions after tonight's meeting.
Okay, so the one on the screen is a little different than what you have in your in your file.
It'll be shared with you later, thank you. Again, moving on, you know who we are, and so we can go nowhere without our beautiful infographics. So we couldn't move on without this. Because what we'd like to cover and show you within a screenshot or one screen capture is centering youth wellness. We're really trying to build the whole human here. And so each category that you see here listed is an extension of our efforts to meet the needs of our whole child or whole human. So youth engagement, really engaging and bolstering and uplifting the voices of our youth, our students, career, college and community readiness, working with counselors, all the same, and making sure that we are focusing on LCAP Goal One and making sure that all of our students are career and community, college, career and community ready. DEI is a new arm that's been added to this as, of course, we as Jedis are now championing, championing this work or leading this work, but it's not just the work that we're doing. And we're trying to collaborate with, no, we are collaborating with all members of the district to make sure that our policies and the activities and things that we're doing in the district are inclusive and that all students are engaged in a learning environment that's safe.
And this includes working with the community, like adult learning, us as adults, us Jedis, all staff members and also the community members, parents and others, aligning our work with other projects we have or like PBIS and transformative, transformative social emotional learning. I like to emphasize the transformative aspect. So it's not just about, and this connects to youth engagement. How can we actually transform the systems of oppression that is causing trauma and like lack of well-being for our students and community and change them? And then just the start of practices, not as a behavior management tool, but as a teaching mindset or in a way of interacting with others. How do we interact with others in our environment in a way that we're building relationships and really like treating each other as humans and repairing the harm when it's done?
And again, our goals at a glance, based on the district's key strategies for the year, is adult education, youth engagement, celebrations, awareness and education, grants and the framework that we is in our future.
So something we've been doing, we started off with like spatial projects. So we've been working on the Stacyo Civic Engagement and Project Soapbox along with, well, there's no more social studies curriculum specialists, but also ed services. We want to really validate our students' work towards the civic engagement and motivate students to do so as well. And with our partnership with MIGMA Challenge, we trained eighteen teachers on the MIGMA curriculum. We had students engaging in Project Soapbox, so they created their own speeches. And we had the first, the first in-person presentation, soapbox presentations, or we had a ten finalists. presentation, soapbox presentations, or we had a ten finalists present. Uh, we're still, um, we also went with Yo Osama and Kondili Mullen and Mark Gomez to like ethnic studies classes, um, to language classes, to, um, talk about the state seal of civic engagement and the state seal by literacy. We also worked with instructional leadership team, um, and providing equity PD sessions and adult learning there. And we worked with Ms. Henry at Rancho San Juan and her work with Black Girl Magic and Black Boy Joy to help, uh, support her in those endeavors.
What's very exciting is our adult learning, I know we speak a lot about our students and how we must empower, uplift and educate and so we have to do, we have to do our due diligence as the adults that are guiding these students and so, um, we have been able to provide twelve-plus professional development opportunities, uh, for our teachers. And I just have to give kudos to the teachers who are watching on YouTube because we're not here, but, but kudos for them going above and beyond because these are optional, these were not mandatory, and so they took the time to, um, take part in our LGBTQ PD Day, um, instructional leadership teams. Um, there was a classified, um, um, training as well and so what I like to highlight is we had thirty-two participants at our LGBTQ plus PD Day, uh, we had healing-centered engagement where these book clubs were meeting, um, twice a month or once a month and we had thirty-eight participa, participants in that. Um, we went through a, is it sixteen weeks, well, it was a lot of hours that we had to put in to become healing-centered engaged educators and we had sixty-nine educators actually qualified, become certified. We have eighteen participants in our Teaching for Black Lives Study Club, we've had mindful educator training, we've had our district-wide anti-bias training and we're going to be sharing some feedback from that. Uh, we've had our MIGMA Action Civics Training, which we had eighteen teachers participate in that. And our Task Force for LGBTQ and then we've actually had staff, kudos to La Paz Middle School, who reached out to us several times and asked us to come present to their staff as well. And then, of, of course, the classified presentation, classified asked us to be a part of their presentations or their day of training earlier in the year. And so these are a few pictures, we've been able to participate in ethnic studies conference with Ed Hartnell, they've asked us to be a part of that. Our restorative justice practitioners have been diligent and speaking to their staff at their sites on what restorative practices look like and how they can be incorporated. And of, of course, we like to, um, highlight the healing-centered engagement and hopefully continue that for more of our educators.
So now we're moving on to, uh, as Tamisha mentioned, we had the district-wide staff, uh, training on bias and anti-bias. Um, there's about sixteen hundred staff members and one thousand thirty-two staff members responded to the survey. So that gives us about sixty-five percent, um, of the respondents. And we have to, you know, point out that there's a thirty-five percent non-response bias that, like, we can't really generalize it, uh, potentially to the, the population, but it's still good to see an initial, initial analysis of the results. Uh, there's still more to go over, um, so I'll go over, uh, the initial analysis, uh, as I mentioned, about sixty-five percent of the staff members completed the survey. Uh, the majority believed the videos were informative with the average being three point nine six and the median of a four out of five. And ninety percent of the respondents felt like they understand implicit bias better. Also, we saw a lot of task force interest, so a hundred and eighty-six individuals demonstrated, demonstrated interest in joining a task force to continue this work, so we'll be reaching out to them later as to see, um, just how to continue to work with them, um, in a task force. Uh, a lot of the respondents, hundred and forty-three participants, uh, asked for further training, so people want to continue this work. Particularly, they want more hands-on and interactive training. And further, thirty-three of the respondents asked for further dialogue and conversation, so they want to be able to talk to their colleagues, colleagues, um, and each other and really learn about their own biases, how to address them in others and themselves and how to really work. They also asked for, uh, there, there was other suggestions, uh, such as developing action plans, partnering with other organizations and changing the time of the training, and a lot of those suggestions were also, um, like training and education for the students and families. And finally, the, we, in terms of transparency, even though they're outliers, we wanted to share this other feedback. One respondent shared that we need to address anti-whiteness, another believes this work is pushing out Christianity and one feels we should stop this work altogether. Just want to be transparent, um, and show the different numbers and this is mostly response on what, what's the next steps. Um, but there's still more, uh, analysis to be done, um, to continue this work.
And so we've had seventeen women complete the Hira Soul, uh, training, we have fifteen members complete our Hoven Noble training and we also conducted staff visits, um, actually site visits to help and, um, science and middle college in San Diego who actually, um, has a robust restorative justice practice, um, incorporated into their school and so we're using them as a model, a learning, um, a learning hub for us and how we can model that here. Uh, we just like to brag, uh, more on our, on our teachers who took the time to, uh, participate in our LGBTQ PD Day. Uh, there were thirty-two participants and this was talking about legal responsibilities, which is very important um, when we're handling our students and, and making sure that the space is safe for our students.
And here even as, uh, just, what is it, nine months now?
Yeah.
In this role, we've also been participating in our own, uh, adult learning. For example, we attended the Dream Differ, uh, Conference in Chicago. Um, and we also presented at the twenty-one, no, we, yeah, presented at the CSLA, um, Conference, we gave a presentation and we gave two presentations at the CCSS, uh, Conference, so we're talking about anti-racism in education and also, um, increasing like the state's seal civic engagement, um, involvement with our students.
And so one thing I have to say about this is we put Salinas Union High School District on the map for something positive. While we have this negative, there is a negative cloud, um, due to racism in our, in our district, but when we're going to these conferences and we're talking about the heavy lift that we're about to do in this district, people are very, very inspired. And although we have a lot of work that we need to do as a district, we are steps ahead of many people that are around us. So that is, um, kudos to everyone who's supporting that type of work.
So next we're talking about youth engagement, um, and how we engage in the youth. Um, so overall, we have a, we're working towards the state seal civic engagement particularly to Project Soapbox. We have affinity groups, uh, it's, right now, we're particularly focusing on students with disabilities, um, Black and African-American students and LGBTQ plus students, but we know there's a lot of other, of other students that also need affinity groups. Uh, we've conducted student surveys, um, and done other work. Here we have a picture of about twenty students from North, uh, no, from Mount Toro and Rancho San Juan who attended the epicenter, uh, visited the epicenter. And we have a few others from North High going at the end of the month.
And empowerment, uh, a growth empowerment, a event held at Mount Toro, um, earlier in the year and so we're getting great feedback from the community and from students, um, holding space for them to feel like they belong and they are seen and heard.
And part of the youth engagement is, uh, focusing on celebrations and joy, so we've talked about anti-racism, but it's not just about what we're working against, but what we're working for, uh, towards. So, uh, part of it is celebrating our humanity, celebrating our history, our identity, um, and this is what we've been trying to do during this year. Uh, through cer, uh, different, uh, events including a homecoming cookout, Black History Musical for which, uh, about three hundred students attended, about fifty per school. And then also, uh, the, the awareness, uh, where all the, 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 against lurs that was attended by all middle school students and about fifty per, per high school.
And so, um, what we'd like to focus on, not like to focus on, but one thing that we did want to focus on, like Leticia was saying, is while we are trying to eradicate hate and racism, we still must celebrate what we do have and we do have a robust community here, a community of allies as well. And one thing that was broken, um, within our district is the trust of the, is of the trust of the Black community. And so, one thing and I appreciate, um, Superintendent Burns being behind this is really we're trying to build the bridge, we're trying to rebuild that relationship, it's about rebuilding a relationship. And so what we did was focused on, um, building Black families and so we had a homecoming cookout, um, when, and this is aligned with HBCU around that time when, um, there's homecoming and, and people are visiting, it's homecoming around in our district as well. And so they were invited and we, we had swag, we had food, we had just a space to be who they were, um, who we are and to also show that we as a district are in support of celebrating them, their whole selves, their Black skin, their Black families. We want to know what, we want to hear their voice and so we wanted to bring them together in a space that was not so intense, like a board meeting, but it was something that was outside, fun and free. And so there's some pictures, there were many smiles, we had the band from Rancho San Juan, the drum line that came out from Rancho San Juan Jump House. Um, a lot of great food, a lot of great dancing and, and, and people and a lot of great feedback. And so, um, this takes us into the awareness and education piece where we're focusing on our students, um, due to, due to the LCAP and it's LCAP Goal Three, uh, where we're really focusing on our students with disabilities. So Circle of Friends is our inclusion, in our, our inclusion club where we're really connecting our, um, students with disabilities with the general population, um, students, um, of different abilities. Um, our LGBTQ, uh, Task Force, we are going to be participating in the Day of Silence this Friday. Um, and then safe space stickers and then the schoolyard wrap and so this is bringing awareness and making sure that our district is really looking at our differences not as deficits, but when you educate other people about everyone else, you're really going to find the assets. So that's what we're really trying to focus on, on awareness and education.
Yeah, as Tamisha mentioned, we're participating in the Day of Silence, so the LGBTQ plus Task Force that was started last year. Um, together we, we were thinking about how, uh, we can support our students and staff and community. And, um, GLSN has the Day of Silence, it's going to be this Friday, uh, April fourteenth. Uh, and we asked, uh, community members to just share their story, uh, being an ally or part of the LGBTQ, P, LGBTQ plus community. So even though, um, the, since the deadline already passed, if you have stories, please submit them as well, we'll publish them on Friday. Um, and some students and staff are going to be participating, wearing ribbons and masks, uh, engaging in the Day of Silence, but then we're also breaking our silence with our stories so that other people can see, um, you know, just our stories, who we are.
And so, um, we're, we're all listening and thank you for bearing with us. So we did apply for a few grants, um, we did apply for the anti-bias grant and we were denied because it actually is a good thing, it's not, we wanted the money because we want more resources, but it was a good thing because like I said before, um, the awardees of that grant had not taken any type of steps toward incorporating diversity, equity or inclusion. So, we must give ourselves, like we said, we're trying to eradicate things, but we must celebrate ourselves as well. Salinas Union High School District, we are on the right path, we have already started that work. Um, we did apply for the It Gets Better Grant, have we gotten word on that yet? Haven't gotten word on that yet. And then the California Certs, uh, It Gets, It Gets Better Grant, um, supports our LGBTQ, um, students and staff and then we have the California Services Grant, which aligns with our California, um, Seal of Civic Engagement. Um, we're still working on our framework, those are the, these are the next steps where we're bringing in community, um, equity training, we're working with the board, our study sessions, all of these things and really making sure that we're creating a framework that's inclusive of restorative justice action plan and, um, we are, we're focusing on that LCAP goal, making sure that we're making all of our spaces here at Salinas Union High School District safe for all students and staff.
And there's links to those different, like, proposals and drafts, uh, the PD partner options, the Research Justice Facilitator, uh, Action Plan and then the action, the planning guide for a task force. And that moves us again, like Tamisha said, to our next steps, um, where it's, we're, we're here facilitating the work and coordinating, but this is a communal work, so we have to get the community involved or, or in a, a productive and like meaningful way, um, to create our common mission for the district, um, and work towards those next steps. Uh, some of the ideas are conducting an equity audit, we know there is bias and racism, but to see which aspects we can actually address and which ones we should address next, um, convening the task force, including, uh, those a hundred and eighty-six people and others, uh, so not just staff members, but also community members, students, parents, um, creating a framework along with that task force. Uh, and then plan changes based on the framework goals, so this should be a long-term, uh, action plan, um, so that it can be sustainable. And then, um, as hearing, based on what we heard from the surveys, uh, we need to continue PTs and trainings, but what, some of their interactive and include dialogue, uh, and they are continuous.
So we appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity, we have a lot more work ahead of us and we are here to help facilitate that and we look forward to convening with the board and the task force to continue this work, thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure if you were here earlier when we had a lot more people in the audience and there was, um, statements that were said to us, um, as far as like they need systems in place, they need to, they need help in assuring that the students, that everybody feels safe on campus, they want help with safe schools. Did you guys hear all those statements that were being said? So those statements is things that you keep in mind when you're preparing some of these trainings to help with the staff?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that's what the, the need is, right?
Absolutely.
And that's why we need the whole community, people, different staff members, because we might have life for our biases and we need to be able to hear from other people and the people working directly with the students, especially in the students and parents, uh, so that we can know the needs and address them.
Because those are the needs, so if there's needs that, that you can put into your training, but also let us know what we can do to help to assure that all this gets met, because, I mean, we heard it very loud today. And so, we need to address it.
Yes, we've been hearing it very loud since twenty twenty, so we're definitely going to be addressing, addressing this as a community.
Mm-hmm, and we've been working with the, with Dr. Christmas and Mr. Burns, Superintendent Burns, about some of these next steps so you should be hearing in the next few, soon.
Yeah.
Um, just like, uh, different consultants to help us with this or, uh, different things to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a quick question, sorry, I know it's late.
Yes, that's fine.
So then, just to piggyback on her comment, this was one of my questions as it relates to the work being done at Harden Middle School. Most of the comments today were related to that, so is there, uh, some extra effort put, put there right now that, or, or, you know, is there anything that we can do to support that effort, because I, you know, I'm hearing it from Harden.
Yes, we actually have a affinity group that's been running, uh, that's been going with Harden even before the incident happened with, um, schoolyard rap, which we feel actually had an impact with at least the students that we were meeting when they were able to handle it or go talk to somebody that they, um, trusted and met within that affinity group. And so we're going to continue that work, um, and extend from, from that point. But we are at Harden Middle School, we've already had two meetings, um, during advisory time and we actually will be going back either this Friday or, or next Friday and we're working with, uh, our community partner, uh, Rigorous Love to address some of those things.
Okay, and then on the state civic engagement seal, is that something that the State of California Department of Education gives? Is this the first time it's happening or?
This is the second year that this, this district is in, uh, participating in it. Yes, last year was the first year, we had sixty-three, uh, students, uh, who were eligible and got the seal, three of them being juniors. Um, and this is the second year, but, uh, for like the first year more like more in person. Um, and we're trying to build it, streamline it, um, so that it becomes more of a, you know, a lot of students...
They want to, like, they want to get it.
Like, yeah, like, and also, like, it should be incorporated into the, into the curriculum, so that it's just like an automatic basic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, one more question, on la cultura cura, uh, you said that eighteen, is it parents, uh, completed the Hira Soul training? So what, so what exactly, and what schools or how do they serve and how do they coordinate with you?
The Hira Soul training, uh, is geared towards women, so it's eighteen women. It was, uh, several of them were, um, restorative justice facilitators, there was also counselors and social workers. Uh, they've been working with us for a few years, so there's several other staff members that have already been certified, uh, before, but this year it was eighteen, uh, staff members throughout the district.
So they're holding space for young women to be able to, um, express themselves and be who they are and, and share and confide, confide in, with the leaders of, of those circles.
Okay, I'll probably do a follow-up with you guys, but thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, on the seal, do they have something like a sash to wear for graduation to?
There's gonna be a medallion.
Medallion, okay, very good. And then on your, on your PDs, what day of the week and time are you doing your PDs?
Well, we've been doing them after school, so this year have been all after school, except for the one that we had during uh the school day, but oh, that was one.
The LGBTQ PD Day was during the school day. One of them was um like a day that there was no other PDs and it was mostly teachers. And there was another day uh where we had like classified staff. But most of the book clubs and other PDs have been um after school hours, mon- mostly Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Is there any way we can film it and then have them do the PD on their own time, on the computer at home?
I think that's an idea, but I think.
I know you want interaction, but.
Yeah, I think based off of what um staffer is asking for, is really trying to be interactive and having a space to be able to have some dialogue.
Mm-hmm, and then on their own time, they might still do it, but we should also compensate them for for that extra time.
Yeah, it's some of the vendors we work with, they will not let you tape and use their material, so, you know, we we have to pay them as well.
So we could get more people involved that way.
Yes.
Any else, anybody else?
Just, just real quick, so I wanna thank you both, I appreciate your your presentation. And I wanna remind everybody that this is a marathon, and there are times when we need to sprint. There's times when we need to fall down and cry, but it's a marathon. And if we continue along the marathon moving forward, then the work will be meaningful, right? So I appreciate your work and and I I know there's times when you've contacted me and you feel like you took a step forward and two steps back at the same time, so, uh, but we'll keep on the path, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, consent items.
I would like to ask a question on N.
Pull N? Okay, we're gonna pull N, and we wanted to pull C?
No, I just wanted to see if maybe um Superintendent Burns can give us a little bit more information.
So then we want to pull C.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we vote on this?
Yeah, vote on everything else.
Okay, so we're pulling N and we're pulling C, so we're gonna, I need a motion for the rest of it.
So move A through Y, not too bad.
Okay, second, Mr. Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, missing um Natalia.
We got it, okay. All right, do you wanna talk about C?
C, yes.
Okay.
Let's take a question on C.
Oh, I just, I, I, I called superintendent just to get additional information on, I had to close my.
The ed link.
Ed linked academic attendance recovery.
Yeah, because my questions were regarding, um, I know that the high schools have Saturdays, well, I I thought all the schools had, and so I guess, you wanna just kind of?
Yeah, so we haven't had middle school Saturday school programs, comprehensive programs for several years. And so we're trying to reinstitute ADA recovery at the middle school. In fact, our attendance that's reported in the dashboard is only middle school. So we need to increase our ADA, so this is um support services to build that in. We're gonna pilot a couple of schools this year. If it's between now and the end of the year, if it works out, then we we may look to move that to all of the schools. It's a program that pays for itself, and it's our staff doing the work, so it's not hiring a bunch of people from outside.
Which schools will pilot?
Um, I think this one is, do you do you know Dr. Christmas?
Dr. Rendosa, the primary schools for the ARC program for Saturday school recovery.
It should be in here.
Also, middle schools, Saturday recovery.
It will be for all the schools beginning next semester.
No, who's gonna pilot it, who wants to do it now?
Oh, who wants to do it now, it will be um South Sun, Harden and Allos.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that one?
Is that it?
Vote on that separate.
That was it.
Thanks, so have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, yeah.
Second by Vidya Salisbury, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we pull communications proposal, N.
So my question is, um, we have two great people that you have, you have Marcos and the young lady, and you have this proposal for six thousand dollars for a month's work, what are they gonna be doing?
So two months, so we've used Volair Strategies for eighteen months or so, um, maybe even a little longer. So we've used them for strategic communication, they're an advisor to us. They also come in and do all the videos that we produce. So their people come out, they they work with Marcos, they create scripts, they do the video, they do the editing, they do the Spanish translation for us as well. So this is to finish the the fiscal year with them.
So are they teaching them how to do these things, so that we don't have to hire them in the future?
Well, I think that's the conversation next, right? So before we re-invest for the July um fiscal year moving forward, those are conversations of how do we utilize all of our resources to the best ability? I will tell you, one of the attributes that we use them for is strategic legal consultation on communication as well, which our folks don't have that training to do. So if there was a a ma- a major incident in the school district, they would be on retainer-like legal counsel to call to help us through communication strategically.
But are we at the point like, oh, I'm sorry, tracing me.
Don't go.
Are we at the point, though, that we do not need this? Because, I mean, by looking at what um you're paying this company, plus having the two, that's a lot of money that the district is putting up for communication on a monthly basis. And um, I mean, I, I don't want to, there's probably things I don't see all the time, but I just don't see the, the, that much work for me to be able to say, wow, this is why, so.
And and that's all fair, and I think, I think for me, we finish the school year, right, with them, and then we negotiate going forward. Is it a lower amount, is it less service, is it a pay-to-play kind of service? Or cafeteria plan where our our internal folks do the PR and marketing, and we just pay for their service when we need it? So we we can do that as well, but I do think for now, we've finished the school year with them.
Okay.
Just the one thing, I think Patty's point is, is if we have the staff, we just wanna make sure as we develop the fiscal year budget here, looks like we'll get a prelim in in June, and the final will adopt at the end of June, is make sure that our staff have the tools and the computer software to do editing and cameras.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially, you know, a lot of this is COVID mitigation, we still have, you know, people getting COVID, and I think we could use funding to make sure our staff have the tools that people can, you know, watch what we do from a remote standpoint. Um, and so just hopefully, I think to Patty's point, we can bring this in-house, but our employees need to have the tools to be able to do.
I agree.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else?
So I make a motion to accept in hopes that it's short term.
Second? Second, Mr. Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'm listening.
Can I get a second?
I think this is the longest meeting.
Second, Lou Hahn, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.